Mayor Scholl, you are ready to begin whenever you'd like it, looks like.
Okay, we'll call this council work session to order Wednesday, July 15th, 1:00 PM, open for visitor comments.
If you do have any comments, go ahead and raise your hand on the participants list or wave your hand on the video so I can see you. Claire. Sorry Claire, I muted you. There you go.
Good afternoon, Claire Cat, 445 South Third Street. I just really briefly, I wanted to say thank you so much for the city to put together this strategic work plan document. I am so impressed by your commitment to transparency, really clear deadlines. I have two quick questions as it relates to that document, and I haven't spent a lot of time digging into it. One of my questions has to do with the action plans and if those will be available to the public. And if so, how the public will be able to access those action plans. And then my second question slash recommendation has to do with how this strategic work plan will align with the budgeting process in future years. And how, as a city, we will see you kind of align that strategic work and the really awesome projects and commitments you've made in this document to how we're spending our public funds. So those are two thoughts about that document, but it's a really fabulous document. Thank you.
Thank you. John, would you like to answer those questions? Where is John? Looking for him.
Hopefully I'm there. I may respond to that. Yeah, the the action plans are included in the agenda as they, you know, tied to the reports every week in our new model here, so we should. Or every meeting anyway. You should see those. The piece where it folds into the budget is also planned to be, you know, as part of the process here. We'll say we're talking a lot about goals and achieving goals and strategic work plans, but this is really about building a better system of process, so.
This is the first step in a long arduous process that we're going to be going through.
So John, I want to make sure I understand. So the public will be able to see the action plans just when they're attached to specific department reports in meetings. Is that correct?
So this is all very new, and this is the first time we're doing it, but yes, the the action plans are here in this meeting included.
Mayor, can I chime in for just a quick second?
You sure can.
I just want to let Claire know too, on the website too, we've started adding the strategic plans onto the link. So if you click on the business and development section and you get to the strategic work plan, there are links to each goal and each goal lists every project that is under that goal, and there are links to the action sheets there. Some of them are not available yet, and they will be created as departments come up on their, on their report. So we didn't want to force every manager to create all their project action sheets right away. So we're just taking that as they come up in the new department head meeting schedule.
Great. Okay, other visitor comments.
Hi, am I able to do my comments now? Yeah, okay, great. So I have a couple of things that I want to talk about, so I'll just kind of look at my notes and go straight off conscious a little bit, and then maybe you guys can address after or later in the meeting. So the first item that I wanted to bring up is I would like to see the city make some kind of a resolution in support of racial equality. You may have seen that the county commissioners did that recently, and I think that's a really important step for our community. And I think it's important that all community organizations are taking that step, not just at the county level. I would like to see the commission commit to reviewing policies through the lens of those in our community, not just through your own personal lens. So that means how to, how do our policies disproportionately impact blacks, Hispanics, homeless, low income, people with mental health issues? I would like to see the city commit to taking action, so not just make a resolution in support of racial equality, but also provide updates at regular meetings as to what steps are being taken to do that. That's kind of my first piece. My second piece that I wanted to bring up is all of you have seen in the news, the defund the police movement. I reached out to our chief, Chief Greenway, last month, and ICC'd all the city councillors and the mayor on that email. I had questions about use of force. I had questions about policies, training, all kinds of things. Chief Greenway was amazing. He reached out to me and we had a conversation on the phone, talked about some things. I had follow-up questions and he invited me down to the police station to have some conversations with him. And so I met with him for a couple of hours and talked through some things. So there, there are a lot of things that I think need city council attention. I think there are a lot of great things that this community is doing. I think Chief Green, Greenway has a lot of great ideas. He has removed the neck restraint policy for police. He has committed to rewriting the use of force policy, which I think are all important steps being taken. I'm a little bit disappointed that I haven't seen any of that addressed in city council meetings or brought up that this work is happening. I would like to see and help, I'd like, I would like to see how St. Helens can learn and improve as a community and utilize our police force in a way that supports our community and supports our force in their true purpose and talents. I think there's a lot of areas in our community that end up evoking a police response that maybe that is not always the best case. So that can include homelessness, addiction, mental health crisis. So I urge you all to think about how do we address these issues? How do we not just address or respond to these issues as they're happening? But how do we eliminate them in our community? I know we won't be able to 100% eliminate them, but to really focus on the people in our community who are struggling is really important. I would like to see the city council working and problem solving with local agencies. I would like to see that collaboration happening and efficiencies happening across different groups. I know that some of that work is happening behind the scenes, but I would like to see that highlighted and that information made available to our community. Another area of interest for me is data. So I am a huge data person. It's part of my job. It's ingrained in me, and I would really like to see, see the use of data on what our police force is doing and not just our police force, but police forces in the area. I do have a public request out to Columbia 911 to get data on our local agencies to find out where the police, police response really is and what kind of calls are getting, because I think that's really indicative into where the attention is needed in our community. So I would like, I would like to see the city support that request. I'm still working through it and they're discussing with legal, but I would like to see someone in the city staff kind of support and get behind that. I'm happy to do analysis on it. That's my goal, but it would be nice to have community or city support on that. And then the other piece is we have commissions for all sorts of areas in St. Helens. We have a Parks Commission, we have Arts and Cultural Commission, but we don't have a Police Commission. I, I urge you guys to consider adding something like that. I realize that it's not as simple as just saying, oh, let's get a commission and get some people from the community. And I know that there's a lot of staff work that goes into all of those meetings, so I realize that, and I'm not going in blindly to that, but I think it's important. I think just having feedback, citizens in the community who can provide that feedback and make recommendations to city council is really important. And then another thing that I wanted to bring up quickly is just, I'm sure all of you have seen the articles about Eugene and what they're doing. If you haven't, I urge you to Google Eugene Kahoots and see, see what their structure is. It's their crisis assistance helping out on the streets. It's really interesting, and I think, I think there's a lot of room for St. Helens to look to that as a model. So that is my long-winded list of items that I would like to see you guys considering, thinking about and addressing going forward.
That's a very familiar voice. Is that, is that, can we get an introduction on that?
Hi, that's Carmen. Carmen Dunn.
Hey.
Thank you.
Other visitor comments?
If we have one from Patrick, sorry, Patrick, I just, you need, you may need to unmute yourselves.
Done. Thank you. I just wanted to speak in support of everything Carmen just said. I'm not familiar with her, the last item on the list. I will check that out. But in all of the other matters that she brought up, I would say I'm just in 100% support of such actions and on by the, by the city in the, the future. And I wish that I were as articulate as she was in her account. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Other visitor comments? Raise your hand if you would like to comment. Wave.
I think we are good.
Okay. So in response to that, a little bit of, you know, working with St. Helens School District Kelvin for a while on mental health and quality issues to discover, not discover, connect St. Helens. It was followed after discover battleground. We have spoke on racial inequalities in our meetings prior to this movement. We do continue to partner with outside agencies. We have been doing this prior to this movement. I just want to make that very, very clear that if there's something this council has been working towards quite some time prior to this movement. So that's my answer to your question there, Carmen, and we can, we can always improve and we.
Are we able to have back and forth at all, or is, is, am I done since public comments is over?
Public comments is over, Carmen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address a couple of other points that were brought up that are good valid things, in addition to the diversity, equity and inclusion types of you know, ongoing aspirations to be more inclusive. The, and I don't want to speak for Chief Greenway, but the, the use of crime data was one of the things when he was first hired that he was, wanted to bring this community, and he was kind of surprised to see that it didn't exist in the format that he was used to. And that him and Lieutenant Hoag have been working closely with some community partners and try to get that to happen. So that, we, we know that's a deficiency. We're working on it. That's about it. And I am familiar with the program to Eugene.
It looks like we lost the mayor. He's probably going to try reconnecting. Councilor Topaz, it looks like he wanted to speak.
Yes, following up on the mayor's comment about working with the schools, I think council ought to try, especially with this pandemic, to have a heavy partnership because this next coming part of the year is going to be real weird and already the rec department, the libraries and the schools are working. I think somehow the council ought to raise their hand and see if we can offer any help to the schools. Because as everybody knows, it's going to be a real hard job coming up.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this work is ongoing behind the scenes because of the COVID. So much stuff is kind of pushed off the, off the, you know, off of the public meeting agenda. I mean, I have conversations weekly with members of the school board, people from CCMH, the food bank with community action team that we're always looking for ways to partner and to, you know, writing grants and making connections to try to smooth the path for those that provide those services. The city is not, we're not mental health providers or we're not housing providers, but we can try to work with these nonprofits. And not everybody, we don't go around, you know, blowing our own horn about writing, you know, multimillion dollar block grants to help the food bank, to helping the community action team with their transitional housing. There's a lot of needs that are being met. It's just, it doesn't get very much news coverage. And once it's done, we don't talk about it anymore. We just move on to the next project. But we have ongoing relationships with all those providers in our community. And they go directly to John. It ends up on the council agenda and it gets approved at the time that the request is made. We let those, you know, CAD is so overstressed with the burden in this community. They're just trying to keep their head above water for the needs that are happening every day. And with the COVID and unemployment, it just continues to snowball. And we let people that are experts do their job and we kind of like wait to be called on and try to not micromanage their business. But we've, in the time I've been on council, we've partnered with all of those groups that provide service. And I'm sure wouldn't take much for John to have that list of those active partnerships.
That's all you ought to do is beat on John to be a little more public where we help. John, you're not doing anything. Can you do that this afternoon?
So are we waiting for?
Matt's muted. I don't know who he's talking to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I was trying to get ahold of President Morton to run the meeting until Mayor Scholl comes back on. He lost internet and is rebooting his machine right now.
Okay, dope. Any, any further visitor comments? Hearing none. Let's go to item three, discussion topics. And just for everyone's knowledge, the council will take 10 minute break around 3 o'clock. First of all, we've got 3A, which is the annual report from Parks and Trails Commission.
Hello again. That's me. I don't know if I should share, if we should share a screen for the document that's in the packet or how that's typically done, or if I should just talk through it because everybody has it in front of them.
Share the screen probably works because this is live on Facebook and they don't.
Hey Carmen, I can, I can go ahead and share my screen with the doctor.
Great, thank you.
And you could just tell me when to scroll to the next page.
Okay, you can scroll. Nothing to see here. So I'm just going to kind of walk you guys through this document. You can read it in your own time too. But first off is just 2020 membership. So membership, this year we had Howard Blumenthal was reappointed. I am chair this year and Alisa Mann is vice chair, and then Walter Fowler is our new member. Next page. Next, we'll get into specific Parks and Trails updates. So we just kind of have a bulleted list of items that we've covered since our last annual report. And so I have them broken out by park. So for McCormick Park, we saw the Veteran Memorial Expansion complete, and it looks great. The BMX Park was rebuilt. The, the track was rebuilt there. Replacement of the playground equipment at McCormick has been discussed in some of our meetings because it's past life expectancy. We entered in the Blazers Moda Assist All Abilities Playground Contest and won, which is great. So we won $20 for every assist in a regular season game. We are looking into, or the city is looking into drainage and artificial turf on the infield. So conversations has, have been happening about that. And then there does continue to be high usage of the park and amenities. Some things that we'd like to see in the master plan are turning a ball field into a larger multi-sport field with artificial turf. For Campbell Park, again, discussing the replacement of playground equipment because it is past its life expectancy. And then timed doors were added on the restrooms in that park. For Gray Cliffs, the redo of the upper trail staircase is great. We've been talking about wanting to have that completed for a long time. So it's great to see that done. Huge improvement. The kayak launch has been really well received by the community. And for future improvements, we'd like to see a fence around the dog park area. Next page, please. For Columbia View Park, the bathrooms were closed for a while due to fire damage and the repairs have since been completed and timed doors have been added on the restrooms. In the Botanical Gardens, there was, last year, there was previous interest with a Friends of group, and they were investigating doing a 501(c)(3) to aid and getting donations for the park improvement. That fizzled out and the interest in that dissipated, so we haven't heard about that anymore, I think at all. But we are looking to future coordination for cleaning trails, garbage cleanup, removing invasive species. So a lot of that needs work. In the future, we'd like to add more curb appeal to that area, the gravel parking area and adding a kiosk at the entrance. And then there was discussion with Columbia County Beekeepers who actually came to one of our meetings and we had asked them to come up with a plan to improve the bee habitat in that area. For Nob Hill Nature Park, a lot of work has been completed there from the Friends of group. There was a total of 175 combined hours of work in 2019, which is great. Working out the placement of new benches in the park has been an ongoing discussion. And then they're continuing to hold work parties. They have one in November for trail maintenance and work on the staircase to have better drainage as well as more planting. They did get a grant for the, from the City of Portland Garden Club of $500. And then they are working on new techniques for handling invasive species like red shiny geranium, which is kind of cool. Next page. Dalton Lake Nature Preserve, lots of changes in the past year, which I'm sure you guys have seen throughout the year. But this is just kind of a recap of some of those items. There are solve cleanups happening. Educational walks were happening on the second Saturday of every month with the rec department, but that was pre-COVID, so those aren't happening right now. The Dalton Lake Nature Preserve Advisory Committee has been formed and Friends of Dalton Lake Nature Preserve has a page as well, so you can find updates there. Barlow Bikes and Cycle Columbia County submitted a grant to purchase a bike rack, the repair station, and they'll be donating that to the preserve. A kiosk was built and the materials were donated by Dollgrins and then a local carpenter, Ron Young, for donated time to build that kiosk. There is lots of talk about signage, signage pointing to the nature preserve as well as signage for plant and tree identification that we want to have added. And then we are doing plastic donations through Trex to get a Trex bench. So the first one has already been ordered and is on its way. And as well as a donated concrete bench is now ready to be placed in the preserve this summer. There have been conversations about parking. So Sue has been come, having conversations with Buck about parking for two vehicles at the north end of the preserve. And then there was, there was talk of ODOT outfall enhancement. So they did enhancement to the outfall for fish, fish passage, all at their expense. And they were manually removing ivy from trees. That was their main focus, which was done by a contractor. Next page, please. Godfrey Park, still have the new nature-based playground on the list. That progress is continuing. The surveying was completed and the hillside has been cleared. We have interest in doing an online pet area eventually, and then we moved the, or we didn't, but the, the free little library that was in Campbell Park was being vandalized and got moved to God. For Civic Pride Park, right now it's just benches and a small pass, so there's a lot of room for improvement at that park. It is a good location. It's by the school and the pool, and we do have improvement. But they're all priority level three. So we would like to see some progress in the next year to boost visitation to this park. Walnut Tree Park is a great neighborhood park and the citizens in the neighborhood are keeping up the little library, which is sponsored by the Friends of St. Helens Public Library. The Urban Trail is something that we continue to bring up and continue to want to see progress on. We do think we need to reevaluate exactly where the trail should be going and revise that plan a little bit since the first part of the Fifth Street Trail is complete. So we're hoping to see more progress on that this year. Sand Island Marine Park, as you all know, is now managed by a third party with new amenities like the free shuttle and camp post. We have gotten some positive feedback from the community about this, which is great. And we would like to see postings about rules and how to leave a campsite. That's something that was brought up from a public comment in one of our meetings. The Millard Road Property Park Designs, Jenny presented two different options for us and we, we recommended option one, really to utilize the wetlands to the benefit of the park. And we really don't want to be excited on growth when it comes to that property. We get tons of feedback that we don't have enough fields in this community to accommodate youth sports. Right now, it seems a little bit of a moot point just with COVID and everything. The usage on sports courts and all of that is not what it typically is, but I think we need to think long-term. And the, the courts that we have right now do not, do not meet the needs of the community. So that's what we're thinking there. And then that's all the park-specific updates. So other items that we have, just, we had a table at the trunk or treat to hand out candy and brochures again this last year. And then we had for the Parks and Trails Commission for future events, once COVID is over, so that we actually have a banner on a table in the future. So it's a little more formal. And we had a lot of discussions in the past year with, about electronic scheduling and on fees. Staff finalized the Friends of Parks and Trails Program guidelines and policies, which is on the website and is great. We've had a lot of interest from the community about trails. It comes up quite a bit. We would love to see a trail connect all the way from McCormick Park to Scappus Bay. It was mentioned that there are only five landowners between those two locations, and it would be great to have a greenway along the water. We've seen more people walking on trails in the past few years, and we would like to see an addition in the master plan for developing and designating water trails. Additional discussions have happened about volunteer forms and identification for volunteers. And then, like I mentioned earlier, we, we, I think I mentioned, maybe I didn't mention it, for our master plan updates, we are trying to add things to a list for potential updates in the future. We'd like to have a master plan for each park eventually. There's many projects that are in the 2015 plan that should be done in the next couple of years, so it's time to think about future vision. There's nothing in the budget right now for master plan updates, and it is a lot of work. So it may be something that needs to be budgeted and to get a consultant in. Cities typically update those every 10 years, and it will be helpful to have the updated census information when we make those updates. As mentioned, we're continuing to add things to a running list, and we have had talk about potentially adding or making addendums to the master plan so that we don't lose track of those items and they get captured. So that would be something that would happen on a once or twice a year basis potentially. And just having all of that master make easier go for grants and other funding opportunities. A lot of information, but are there any questions? Oh, one more page. Thank you and acknowledge my, so we are always so grateful for the park employees who are maintaining and keeping our parks looking nice and functional. It comes up in all of our meetings, so thank you to all. Also to all of the city staff who keep us running, provide us updates and are always prepared, knowledgeable and passionate. We really appreciate you all. Jenny, all the work you do on grants is awesome. Sue, your professional and timely work on the preserve and all of our other parks. Sue and Dave for the steps at Gray Cliff, Bad for always helping out and working with volunteers and keeping us up to date on things. For the Moda Assist Program, it was really last minute that we were included in that, and the staff did an amazing job of together quickly, and we won, which is awesome. So big thanks to everyone in the city who helped the city staff as well as people in the city who voted. And then we really appreciate the members of the public who come forward with suggestions and improvements to our parks. So we love seeing that involvement from the community in our regular meetings. So that is all. Questions, thoughts?
I have.
Jenny, do you have a question?
Yeah, when, when are your meetings?
They are the, they're Mondays, the second Monday of the month, I think. Yeah.
Second Monday of the month.
You guys have gone every other there for a while, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah. We're monthly again, and we're doing our meetings via Zoom, so.
How would somebody get feedback to you?
I just join the Zoom meeting and we have public, just like this session has room for public comment at the beginning. You can come and speak to us at the beginning.
Right, but your meetings happen during the workday and we're.
Yeah, they're at 4:00 PM. Our contact information is all on the city website, so you're always welcome to email. They're at, yeah, they're at four PM. Our contact information is all on the city website, so you're always welcome to email. I'm the chair. I don't mind getting emails. I may not respond immediately. I work all day long too, so I, I totally feel the pain.
Day meetings, it's hard to participate in.
Yep, I understand. I had to take the afternoon off for this one, so I get it. It's a struggle.
All right, I just, I was, um, did some volunteer work at McCormick Park. So I was like, just standing there for, being there for two hours. I got a half a dozen questions from other parkgoers. So that's why I was just asking about that feedback and how people would reach you.
Yeah, totally. Email is fine or attend the meetings if you can. Thank you.
I know our Parks Commission's meetings, Carmen, sometimes go beyond five o'clock. And uh, you as the chairman, would you be uh, open to people who try to drop in after five o'clock? After their workday, if we are going beyond that, that time? Uh, with a, on a uh, uh, on Zoom?
Yeah, I'd be open to adding a, a public comment at the end too. Um, and I think that would be a good way to have feedback um, of the content that we actually cover in the meetings. Cause I think that can be a gap, not only in our meetings, but in these meetings too, where you have public comments. And then that's the end of it. People can't res- respond or provide feedback, which is unfortunate. So I, I can bring that back to our next meeting if, if you guys are in support of that.
Yeah, I, I had never actually met Carmen, but I've heard lots about the work you're doing. And um, the youth group that I do is always interested in doing stuff for rec and for parks and stuff. So it's like, have more cross, cross pollination of the ideas and the work. Cause they have volunteers that want to do stuff, just put them in the right space. So thanks.
That would be great. Thank you.
For good report.
Thanks.
Well, it came to my attention that the Mollard Road property originally was supposed to be a park out there. And that it was supposed to be named Dahlgren Park. And I just want to make sure that, for the record, that any park in that area. Um, should be called Dahlgren Park because of the fact that the property was partially donated. With the understanding that it'll be called Dahlgren Park. So it's going to put that in the Parks Commission's ear, that for the future. Anything out Ross Road or Millard Road area should be called Dahlgren Park.
Is there a determination somewhere where?
It was.
That was.
Years ago when it was donated. Uh, you'd probably have to go back to the original document deed of the property.
Okay.
Yes.
Kate, do you recall that?
Yes, that, that was part of the uh, agreement, yes.
Okay, that's good to know. I'll take that back to the next meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions for Carmen? Fabulous work. I like the water trails. That would be awesome. I, I like that part of it.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make some recommendations then and then you guys can, you guys can approve them.
I was listening on my phone, Carmen. I called in. I was rebooting my computer, so.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. All right, let's get a presentation from Wilsonville Concrete Products.
Um, hey, Matt, by chance, do you have my presentation keyed up as well? Oh, great. Well, um, first off, just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak. On, we have been working with Rachel and also John in terms of, um. Kind of activating the St. Helens Industrial Business Park, the old Boise Cascade site. With a particular focus on the river frontage and opening that up for uh, commercial uh, marine business. So uh, a little bit about Wilsonville Concrete. And then I wanted to open it up to any questions that you have about our project or the work that we've been doing. Um, and next slide. So our business got started in the eighteen eighties and we actually got started towing logs down the, mostly the Willamette. Uh, and, and some of those log dumps were in the St. Helens area. Uh, in the nineteen fifties, we got into the concrete business. And today, I'm the fifth generation of my family that's been involved in the business. We have about ninety to a hundred employees. About a third to a quarter of those folks are in our marine business, which were basing out of the St. Helens area. A, a big portion of that marine business is predicated on the sustainability advantages of moving material on the river. And so when, when folks first came to the area, there's a reason why the river was a working river. And the just economies of scale and your ability to move freight with significantly lower carbon emissions. Um, was a huge driver of that. And that advantage continues today. And so the, the one example of that is one of our tugboat deliveries that we're making is taking about a hundred truckloads. Off of the, the roadways. Ne- next slide. Our family and our business has uh, a long relationship with the St. Helens area. And so it, it really has felt, working with the team at the city in some ways, like we were coming home. And I just want to share a couple of examples of that. So one, right now we're the largest mover of freight uh, through Monoma Channel. So we're moving about two million tons of aggregates through Monoma Channel. Maintaining Monoma Channel as a working waterway is something that is extremely important to our business and to our family. A second aspect is of my three uncles, all of them were tugboat captains. And so all three of them had stories for me about their historical ties to the Boise Cascade Mill Site. Um, and I, I know that within the community of St. Helens, pretty much everyone has a, a relationship. And it was fun bringing my uncle out to the site and him telling me stories about the eighties when they were delivering chip barges there. And he knew the infrastructure and the system there, uh, just like the back of his hand. And so it was, it was really a neat experience. I think the, the other aspect about marine transportation is just the economic vitality. So I, earlier in the year, we had provided some information to John and to Rachel, just about the type of jobs. And we're not a large company, but for our marine business, our folks are, are making seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars. Industrial working type jobs, some, the job for everyone, but it's the type of work that we have. And we're excited to bring those opportunities to St. Helens. More than anything, we want to be good neighbors and good partners with the city. We feel blessed that we've been given the opportunity to work with the city. And just want to be responsive to whatever your needs are and, and really want to hear any concerns or any questions that you have. About our business or our plans at, at that site. And I think I've one more slide. So in terms of the status of where this project is at, we've worked together to do an engineering study of the dock. Structures at the, along the river frontage of the old Boise Cascade Site. Uh, Rachel has done an exceptional job of going through a fairly complicated process with the Department of State Lands. To update the leases that are in place to permit mortgage of some of our equipment. And working through John and the city's legal team, we've been able to prepare. Uh, and have a mortgage agreement uh, ready to, to execute. So where we're at today is we're, we're pretty much ready to move our fleet. Which is uh, some barges, a few tugboats and some crane barges uh, to the Boise Cascade Site. Onto a mortgage ground that we'll be leasing from the city. We just need to finalize uh, one final part with DSL, which we're hoping is imminent. And the, there's a lot of work still on services, partialization. And we fully appreciate and understand that there's so many stakeholders involved in the redevelopment of that industrial area. And including some of it probably isn't for industrial uses, you know, with the discussion on Greenway and, and just so many important stakeholders. And so there's a lot of work to still be done on the land side of that site before, uh, I think there's going to be a parcel though. That we're ready to start putting in buildings and structures. We've been extremely excited on the level of activity and effort from the city. And we've been trying to put forward strong effort as well to keep that moving forward. And I think what we're most excited about is the opportunity to build a marine-based ecosystem in the city. Um, and so coming out of this meeting, reaching out to our partners in the industry. Seeing where there's interest to co-locate other businesses. And whether that's folks who operate dry docks, and so there's diversified marine or JT Marine. Um, other folks who operate tugboats, whether that's Shaver Transportation or uh, other members of my family. Who own and operate tugboats themselves. So we're really excited to partner with the city in terms of reaching out to those potential folks. And really building something that's vibrant, uh, located within the city of St. Helens, connects the city to the river. It continues to build on the great progress that we've had so far. So I think um, there's maybe one final slide that's just opening it up to questions. Wanted to reiterate my thanks to the city and see if um, anyone has any questions about what we're up to.
Now for cup pads, go ahead, jump in there.
Can I ask a question?
That's what he's asking us for.
Okay, two areas. Tugboats and barges and things like that need to be repaired now and then. Do you see any possibility of putting a repair yard in this area? That's the first question. The second question is Woodland is planning a large, uh, deep water port across the river. Will you be involved in that in any way? Those are my two questions.
Um, I, we believe that there is an opportunity for vessel repair uh, at that site. There are two ways that that could happen. One is through a floating dry dock. And then the other way is actually uh, lifting a barge or a vessel out of the water onto the land. And so it's more of a ramp uh, infrastructure. The first option is probably more feasible in the near term because it wouldn't require uh, any permitting. Uh, but that said, that's not the business that we're in. Certainly uh, those types of partners, what are folks like JT Marine and DMI, who will at least be keeping updated. And from our perspective, we, we would view that favorably because it just gives us closer proximity to dry docking. Or a repair facility. Regarding the uh, deep water port development in Woodland, that's something before. Or about the same time that we reached out to the city of St. Helens, we had also reached out to the port of, of Woodland. We chose St. Helens uh, because it was closer to Scappus. And also because the shallower draft access is more favorable for our equipment. We are not currently involved in the deep water port development uh, at Woodland.
I'm going to come back at you with the haulout possibilities. Further down the slough, uh, it's on port property. They've been dragging barges up the slope. Are you aware of that?
Uh, I'm not actually, but that's exactly the, the application that I was referring to.
So that's ongoing, I, not at a high level, but okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you.
But thank you, guys.
Yep. Okay, review League of Oregon City's list of legislative priorities, John Walsh. You're muted. You're muted.
That better?
That is better.
Okay, good. I was just going to add my thanks to, it's been a pleasure working with Wilsonville Concrete Products on this, this project. I think it's going to be a great partnership. The uh, this League of Oregon Cities is the organization that advocates on behalf of cities for legislation. That affects them collectively. And uh, every legislative session, they ask us to list your community's priorities and carry them forward. And they kind of take the top ones and, and set those at the top of their list. And uh, in the past, we've, you know, property tax reform has been on the list since the mid nineties probably is starting. And so it's, it's, it's there pretty much every year. But I wanted to propose, I, I think last time we talked, I, I thought I was going to get a staff recommendation and I, I can do that now here. And um, you know, reading through the, the priorities that benefit the city, benefit cities collectively. I, I think investments in broadband infrastructure and technical assistance, item B, would be one priority that I would recommend. Be of the top four. Also, the, if you skip down to J, the infrastructure financing and resilience, that has a lot to recapitalizing. The brownfields programs and the state special works funds. So to keep those programs healthy and vibrant and recapitalized, they, they concentrate resources on that. We, we have a lot of projects in that arena and I think it's good for, good for us and good for cities that are similar to us. And then if we skip down to property tax reform, that's, that's on the list. It's always on the list. I don't know how, you know, it's really not much to say about it. Other than in the mid nineties, the measures, the valid initiatives, five and fifty that were, went into place. Really put some shackles on the city's ability to control their destiny as far as tax base and the permanent freezing note, permanent tax bases. And then watching all the industries around it slip away really, really hurt cities. But we haven't had much success with that. Uh, W, the rights, right-of-way franchise fee authority preservation. There's been a pretty more recent uh, coalitions of industries wanting to take that authority away from cities. So we think it's very important for cities to be able to control the right of way. There's some federal mandates coming down from like FCC and others that just basically preempt some of that. So we're, uh, you know, feeling fairly guarded and want to keep that as a priority. And lastly, the, the tort liability reform. The, the state of Oregon has a tort cap limit for public agencies. And it began from a lawsuit out of OSU where it was just a tragic thing, really unfortunate. But it, it opened the hospital up to a, just a gigantic settlement that essentially. Unaffordable, but the insurers to the public and that, but no, they, they came up with a solution to put caps on the limit. And it's tied to an inflation index that goes up every year. And I think right now it's one point eight million, I believe. Uh, and it goes up with inflation every year. But that also is under criticism, especially with the local Boise, not local, the, the decision that went down in Boise. Regarding homelessness and people's right to exist and sue public agencies. And then the, the league has a. And rightly so, has a big high, high degree of concern about maintaining that cap on. Liability, so. So I threw five of them at you there and uh, I, it would be my recommendation to leave property tax reform off. And go with broadband, infrastructure financing, right-of-way authority preservation and tort liability is the top, city's top four. The tax, taxes is always on the list, but.
So it's going to make the list no matter what, is what you're saying.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. While you're trying to influence things you can change, right?
Yep.
John, anyways, is that for railroads, roads, or is it local streets? What's the definite right-of-ways in this condition?
Yeah, rights of way are, are public ways. They're streets, um, primarily streets. And it could be a rail right-of-way, I suppose. If it's owned by a public agency like ODOT Rail or something.
John, are you done?
It can be private, although they're under federal regulation. So we have no control of that or we're trying to get control of that? Cause we're obviously small streets, one would assume that the cities hands down have the right-of-way control. But that's not true under the present laws. Is that correct?
Well, the city has the ability to, I mean, there's some things that are preempted, like through the Telecom Act. As far as uh, non-exclusive uses for, you know, fiber and phone and communication, communication infrastructure, that type of thing. I'm not sure that I'm following your, your question there.
Well, I want to put a street, we say between uh, Fourth and Fifth Street. Well, I wanna put a street, we say between uh, fourth and fifth street mid-block. I'm gonna need a right of way to do that. Uh, do we have to go to the state or someplace else to get that permission or is that local?
No, that's, that's not really what this is about. The process of dedicating private property to the, a right of way as part of a development agreement or something else. It just, there is a process for that and that's not what we're talking about is it's I don't, uh, somebody proposing to use the rights away for their business activity. Your
John?
Water company.
John?
Yes.
I'm interested, I'm interested. Are you, are you open for suggestions?
Oh, absolutely.
Like we've done this in the, in the past, uh, uh, from, you know, council action. I'm really interested in N, long-term transportation, uh, infrastructure funding. And I'm interested in that because we have had talks for the past five to seven years. Uh, and uh, very negative talks when it gets to the state level uh, about uh, overpasses. And if we are going forward and looking at the, the future uh, and this long-term transportation, uh, the key is there is long-term. The, the whole idea that St. Helens is really isolated into almost uh, two business sectors and, and, and two sectors and the railroad uh, that bisects our city causes that. And so what we, what, what we're very much in need of is a, is one or two overpasses. And so um, you know, if I, I've always pushed to try and get that on a master plan. And uh, so that if funding ever does come up, that we have it as a master plan on our, on our transportation uh, uh, plan. So I'd like to, I'd like to see that added. I, I just think that, you know, St. Helens is isolated and uh, but the whole idea of the uh, overpasses is a safety issue uh, for fire and rescue. Uh, it's a convenience issue for our citizens of not waiting 10, 15 minutes at a railroad crossing when uh, they might have to get someone to urgent care or whatever. So and for our, our uh, uh, school kids as well. A lot of the high school kids cross the track to go down to uh, restaurant facilities and those kinds of things. So uh, I think there's a, I think there's a need for that. I think I'd like to get on board as uh, looking at the item number N, uh, long-term transportation, uh, infrastructure funding.
I'm not gonna disagree that uh, transportation in long-term, short-term is important to funding transportation in general. Our, our plan, transportation improvement plan does have a great separation project included. It's you know, the issue is that it's out beyond the funding horizon. So it's kind of on the wish list, I think, more than the, than for less. There was some progress in 2017 with the House bill that uh, put that $5.3 billion package, revenue package towards uh, funding these types of things. And uh, and there's still more work to do. Especially with the changing of, you know, from fuel to batteries and, you know, how we address those costs in the future. If we're adding one, we're taking one away. So that's
I just, I had a quick comment. I appreciate all the finance-driven um, focus. But in the middle of a pandemic with no clear end in sight and with economic projections being horrific. We had um, public testimony about the social and emotional needs of our community and rising, you know, self-harm rates or rising homelessness, that it seems a bit remiss to not have any social responsibility in this targeted list. I understand the economic drivers, but I also want to appreciate where we have a large number of our community members are suffering. And it's like if we turn in a list that all four of our targeted items are all related on, you know, roads and infrastructure, that's not hearing the cries of the people. So that's my input.
Are you suggesting item D, Jenny?
I mean, whether it's item D, whether it's some kind of economic impact, personal impact. I just, we don't know the long-term fallout out of the COVID. And we don't want Oregon to be left in the Westland just because we have a small instance. We have a high increase of cases and we don't know what the next year lies. We don't know six months from now where we'll be in the middle of cold inflation season.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like uh, item D, COVID-19 Economic Recovery Investments is what you're suggesting.
Yeah, I just, I think we're gonna need some help to help the, our community out of I don't think they can do it on their own. And I think if the league can help cities and help us advocate for filling in those because I'd hate to see all of the work we've done to economic recovery get lost.
Well, part of this is, part of this is for us counselors to go on the record for what we feel is is important. And that's one of the reasons is that, you know, I suggested the overpass. I will always suggest an overpass whenever, whenever I have an opportunity. And I really appreciate what you're saying about the uh, about how people feel about like right now, but item B looks uh, pertinent. Uh, do you have it up on your screen by chance?
I do. It's, it's on the shared screen here. It's like we and there's still just far too many people unemployed, far too many businesses with their doors closed. Um, to, we're not even close to seeing a sunset and the economic impacts. And as I think it was John or Matt that said, because of the nature of our finance and the way the budget is, our pain usually is a little bit delayed. We, you know, it's when the, the horrible finances hit no aid, it was, wasn't until 2010 that we really felt the full measure of pinch here in Columbia County. So it's like, I wouldn't assume that we've seen the worst of this economically. But that's just my bid, I think, to leave COVID recovery off of this is, is remiss.
Uh, can I?
The uh, comment about COVID recovery, it influences so many from businesses to transportation. The right time, it's a lot broader than the, the little title that it eats up on the page. Um, so much of our community is tied up with business transportation. And all of that ends up with people not working and people aren't working because of COVID. It's a two-step problem and we're, these things are almost sounding like a single step. Uh, I think the COVID economic recovery is poorly worded, but it's a super need.
Matt, am I unmuted?
We hear I hear you.
I had to call in. I had to call in again. I, I'm definitely on for broadband. I can tell you that much because uh, I am literally, I am literally not even 20 feet away from my, my Wi-Fi connection and um, Comcast is driving me nuts today. Uh, my internet's showing it's working. I don't get it.
So
Number one of my
The, the last time I went through this, the mental health was on the list and and, and it was actually one of the state's top priorities. The COVID, the reason I did, I didn't propose COVID is because there's already so many people working on it. I mean, this between the, all the federal programs and the uh, you know, the state's funding of 1.8 billion to try to get out to help communities is probably not enough, but it's something and even later in the report here, we're gonna talk about the, the city's distribution of that at almost $400,000 to try and offset some expenses. Certainly it's important to the recovery.
I just think we need to keep it on the radar because we don't know the full magnitude until we get through winter. I think now when people can do stuff outside, it's not as real. When it's winter and people are underhoused and they can't afford to pay their heating bill, things are gonna, the impact's gonna be really pinched. Cause you know, the, the focus, you know, everybody's got an attention span issue. And it's like when things stop burning in the street, people stop talking about it. And that's my concern is that it's gonna be a long time before all the minimum wage people that were put out, the service workers are all back to work. All the people that work in restaurants, all the people that make hospital, make uh, hotel beds. It'll be a long time before all those people are back to work. So I just look at, you know, there's a lot of people in our community that are in that under $30,000 range that are gonna be felt for a long time, this pain. Some of them won't. This may be the difference of being in a house and not. You know, they don't, people don't have two months. They don't have one month of expenses and people have been out of work for three months. That's just my input is to leave the social issues when we had testimony from several people today and over the last month about the social issues of our community. It just seems like a mess.
And the league's primary, you know, their state lobbying or organization, they're not a federal, so much at the federal level doing that advocacy. It seems to be where, where a lot of the support's coming from. But they were, the, the league was instrumental in creating this distribution or two cities. As a state would have, had a whole different idea on how that monies might get distributed. And they did a really good job coming up with formulas that they did.
John, are we, uh, are we limited to just for uh, four of the priorities? Is that correct?
They're asking for four, so.
And you are suggesting BJW and, and why? Okay.
But it's your, your priorities. So I work for you.
Well
Go ahead.
Well, this is, and, and these priorities are, will go to the legislature and it's the, it's the, with the uh, League of Oregon City is asking the legislature to work on. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. That's just for, that's the way I understood it. And I just wanted to make certain everyone else understood it. It has nothing to do a lot of times with our community uh, until there's, until what the legislature does filters down to our community or affects our community. So um, uh, I just want to make that comment.
How about the other two counselors? You like to weigh in? Keith, Topaz?
Well, I'm gonna jump in on the uh, economic recovery. Because it, that's a really a multifaceted thing. That's jobs and a whole bunch of stuff. Um, I'd give up on the broadband or the, that's gonna be part of the business. Uh, and taxes, as we know, the state's messed up. We also saw how well the state handled the unemployment. And that, that really hurts the social end of this county in a lot of places. Uh, you, you kind of shake your head and wonder if saying anything is gonna do anything down there. The highway business, is that uh, redoing ODOT? Again, that may be a lost cause. But I really think the social end has a lot of features. Anything that makes jobs, allows material to move will help that. I have to agree with Jenny. That's what I see as the big end.
John for lock.
Uh, I, I have to agree with John's picks on this because you know, we're working on all these things all the time. And that, that's what really matters is how much time we spend on whatever particular item you're you're struggling, feel strong about. So ju- just because it isn't on one of these four things doesn't mean we're gonna stop anything. So um, I, I have to agree with John's picks on this, that those are the kind of the main things, the staples that we need in place. We're working on the other things already.
Uh, and I kind of feel the same way. So um, we have a discrepancy on um, what should be the lowest one for John's pick between Jimmy um, and Doug? And it sounds like maybe even Topaz. So what, what's the one you go on and scrub and replace?
I, you know, the, the deal is, is I just brought that up as, and as somewhat of an issue. I, I've I'm not in disagreement with what John has, has brought forward. Um, and I feel like, I do feel like Keith is, is we're telling the legislature what they should concentrate on. We're not telling ourselves what we need to concentrate on. We're telling the legislature what to concentrate on and what their priorities should be. And so, and they, they many times won't listen to the League of Oregon Cities. They just, they just won't. So in some senses, you know, we can be spinning our wheels thinking that you know, if we vote one way, that something is going to happen. Well, uh, I'm, I'm not quite sure of that, of, of that follow-through with the state legislature. Especially with their track record of last year. So um, that's kind of like, I kind of feel that uh, I would yield to my uh, city manager and uh, whatever, whatever he sees as a more workable uh, issue, I'll go along with that.
Okay. Jenny?
I mean, my personal thought is, is I'm fine with keeping John's priorities, but I take a personal priority for myself for um, to do everything I can for the COVID recovery. And that includes for me, calling our state representatives. It includes, you know, calling our state senator. And it includes getting those people involved. So we are not forgotten just because we're small. Because a lot of times, you know, the focus goes on the Willamette Valley and sometimes rural Oregon gets what's left over. So it's like, you know, even if it doesn't make this list and to your point, it's like the real effect with Oregon cities, who knows what that effect is. But I know from personal, my efforts spent in front of Betsy Johnson and in front of Brad Witt, it does make a difference. And I make those trips to Salem and sit down with them and talk to them. And that's, I, you know, that's what I'm gonna spend the next year doing is advocating everywhere I can to get those, those reliefs in here for our citizens. So I'm fine with John's list, but it's, I'm gonna keep working on the COVID and figuring out where I can connect people to the resources they need for their own recovery.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I, if I check me now?
Yeah.
The LOC is much better at the political gamesmanship as compared to what we actually need locally. And since the legislature time seems to be a big game, they're gonna set up the final list. So I guess it's gonna have to be as political as possible, hopefully to get some effect. Realizing that our problems are not necessarily political, but they're real. So go for it, John. Obviously they're only gonna take your word and they're gonna add it with all the other communities around.
Yeah.
It's everybody. And that's another game to itself.
Exactly. Yeah.
So the, the reason that I didn't, I should probably expound on that. The COVID-19 Economic Recovery Investment is, the reason I didn't have it as top billing is that I felt it already had so much attention to it that it was an issue that, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of light on that. It's really important. Um, if, you know, if we want to make a statement about that through this, I would recommend you know, throwing off something down the bottom perhaps as far as uh, you know, the tort, tort liability. Those are also really top billing. There's so many priorities here that compete to pick four is really is fair.
Actually, there's not a whole lot of bad ones on that list, is there?
Right, right.
Okay, well, I think uh, we gotta finish what you were already going with. Um, so go ahead and move forward with that, John.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I'm hoping, I'm trying to get back online. I'm trying to reboot my computer because I want to be online for this. Uh, next is Strategic Work Plan Review. Rachel.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um,
Yeah.
I will be very brief. Thank you all for your work. Uh, Matt is going to show the, the final product that's come out of, as you know, many months of work on your part and thank you for the governance direction. We now as staff are moving We now as staff are moving into the implementation and also into greater transparency and accountability for you and for our community broadly. As part of that, we've got a great opportunity to improve the flow of work sessions and have departments that will be coming to you to report on a recurring schedule. Pretty confident this can also help with the community engagement as we move forward, notice things as they're coming up and really solicit community input and feedback as we, as we move forward. It's a great tool to communicate our work. That's why you'll see a little shift in today's agenda where we have a spotlight on municipal courts, the judge, also our finance reports and the building department. As part of work session changes, John will always have an agenda item and always be able to share current, current issues, current events, things that need attention. I encourage all of you, as always, if you have questions, please ask, we will get you the best information we possibly can. And yes, Matt, if you'd like to go through this and also, this is available on the website as we talked about in the public comment period, it's under business and development, the strategic work plan. And then, thank you, Matt. And as you will see with this click, the goal areas will have our action plans and our accountability measure built in as we, as we go through reporting. So I really encourage you to get real familiar and share, tell your neighbors, have them check in on us. Enjoy, dig in and really encourage folks to engage. Are there any questions about this or the format? And thank you to Crystal for helping to beautify what started as a very large Excel document.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. Okay, municipal court, Sammy annual report, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna actually pull up the court report real quick. I am not going to take too much time. The one-page report is in your packet. Hopefully you had a chance to read through my comments about the court department this last year. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I'd like to turn it over to our Judge Amy Lindgren to speak. Does the council have any questions directly from me that I can answer at all?
No.
Doesn't, doesn't appear so, so I'm going to go ahead and unmute Amy and I will pull up her report. Amy, you there?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
You can.
Great.
Loud and clear.
Awesome. Hello, everyone. Is Ms. Dunn still on?
Yes, she is.
Okay. I guess before I dived into my report, I just wanted to address some of the things she brought up about wanting the city to address issues of substance abuse, mental health. And just so you know, as far as from the mental health and substance abuse for the municipal court, we have collaborated with Columbia Community Mental Health because the problem that I saw immediately was there is a lot of orders to do treatment and mental health, but not a lot of follow through. And a lot of people just didn't have access or the wherewithal to actually get themselves to CCMH. And so what we did was partner with them and there is a dual diagnosis person who comes to the municipal court twice a month. This was pre-COVID, I should add, and does the evaluations in-house. And so when I put someone on probation, they come to the court a few weeks later so that, and do their evaluation for substance abuse and mental health and then work with the counselor to get that moving. And then I follow up with them and have probation reviews. And so we're, from the court aspect, because we see so many people in criminal court with these issues, unfortunately, we are really trying to combat it on our end. The one piece that you brought up that I think we need to do better on is the data. I think that we can get data on how many people we have had the referrals to, how many people show up, and then what, what their success rate is. And so I can start talking to Matt and our clerks about how to access that and what kind of format. I'm not a numbers person and so I will probably need a lot of support in that way. Some other courts have done, made statements about racial equality. I have not, not because I don't want to, but because I think it's something to discuss with counsel and the administration before I do that. And so maybe at the end I could get some feedback on that from everyone. So that's that piece. As far as my report, you know, I think obviously on everyone's minds is the COVID and how, how that's been handled. I've just been really proud of everyone that works with the court on how well we've handled it and their commitment to keeping the wheels on. Most of the municipal courts in the state just totally shut down and are now trying to figure out how to manage getting back up and running. Circuit courts are just totally slammed, huge backlogs. So what we did was immediately follow the governor's order and the chief justice's order with respect to court operations, even though we weren't under their purview. Well, of course, we are for the governor, but not the chief justice. But we immediately started doing video appearances. And we were set up for that because we had had the equipment and everything going for the jail custody hearings. And, you know, Lucy Heil and Joe Root just really did an amazing job. They're our defense attorneys, getting their clients on board and helping coordinate that. Because as I'm sure you can imagine, defendants in court don't necessarily have a lot of means to have the cell phones and internet access where they can print documents. And so they worked really hard to make that happen. Also, Melanie and April just did an amazing job getting people's phone numbers. You know, we did arraignments and that was a huge task for them to get all the, reach out to all of the people cited and to have them call in at the right time. So I think that we kept everyone very safe and, and were able to continue operating. As of tomorrow, the traffic hearings, I reset to tomorrow. So basically from mid-March to June, we didn't have any, because that has such a, it's such a large group that comes into the courtroom and it would have been really difficult for the clerks to set up those video hearings. We just set them all to July sixteenth. So I'm going to be there doing a lot of traffic hearings, but once that is done, we will become 100% caught up. As far as the impact on people who are on probation, we are doing everything we can to support people who can't make their payments. So when they reach out to us, we, you know, I just give them an extension. Just say, okay, take three months off and then get back to us after three months and let us know how you're doing financially with no penalty. I've also been waiving the installment fee associated with setting up a payment plan. And a lot of the classes are closed and for a time period, the work crew was closed. So we've moved to referring people to online classes and giving them extensions when they can't get in, extensions for community service and work crew. And also, I've always given people the opportunity to reduce their fines by doing work crew. So we give them a credit for each day and that's how people can work off their fines. The community service part is hard if people want to do it for nonprofits because the nonprofits are closed and aren't accepting people for work groups. But we're doing our best to just give people as much of a break as we can in extensions. With the driver's licenses on the second part four, we did, you know, I said here that we wouldn't send anyone to suspension for failure to pay at this point. We did last week pull a number of files that were older that hadn't been paying long before the pandemic. And so those ones, we did feel like we had to send those because we just can't have that much of a backlog. But any ones, I think it was from March, starting in March, we have not sent in the suspensions. And then House Bill forty-two-ten passed and so we will not, as of October first, when people don't pay, we cannot suspend their license. So, you know, we'll have to figure out what to do with that situation. There's a lot of chatter amongst the municipal courts on how to handle that. The collections cases, I probably may not recall this, but at the last report, I said we were about to send all of our backlog to the collections and then the pandemic hit. And obviously, we didn't think that was fair. And so we have not done that. So we still have that just sitting and waiting. And at this point, we're just not, we just don't think it's fair to move forward on that. And so I think Matt and I have discussed waiting until the emergency declaration is done and over and we're through this before we move forward. Any questions so far? No? Okay. Courtroom protocol, since we are open again, we only allow, I think it's about six defendants in at a time and everyone else has to wait outside, everyone is masked. There is a barrier, Plexiglas barrier in front of the clerk, whether it's April or Melanie, so that they're protected. And so we ask the normal series of questions before people enter the building, they have to hand sanitize and their temperature is taken. We did have to send a couple of people away who weren't feeling well. When that happens, then I call them and do the hearing by phone or video. And so there definitely may be a time when we have to shut down again. Not shut down, but move to a virtual court hearings if the cases keep going up. So it's just a very fluid situation. Obviously, we're dealing with a lot of members of the public and we want to protect everyone in that courtroom. And then I had been interested in the idea, this is my last point here of the truancy court. And I think when Ms. Dunn was talking about, you know, the marginalized groups and lower income, this kind of hit home with me with truancy court. I think that there are a lot of negative connotations when you hear truancy court and it shouldn't be that way. Just having two kids on my, of my own and the struggles I've had with distance learning, my heart really goes out to people who don't have the financial resources to be online and to teach their kids they're on, on their own. And so I think that a lot of children are going to be left behind, particularly from lower income and already marginalized families. And so what a truancy court could do is identify those people, particularly as we're in this pandemic, where kids can really get lost and try to get them the resources they need. Going to court is, would absolutely be the last resort. And so I know Oregon City and a lot of municipal courts do it. I didn't want to get too far down the path of even researching it if this wasn't something that city council was interested in. And so the police department, thank you, Chief Greenway and everyone who worked on it, did some preliminary research and it definitely seems like it's a hole right now in the county. And so I think it's, you can see on the third page there, the, what the police department came up with as far as what's happening now. So, you know, I guess I'd like to get feedback on people's interest, on the counselor's interest on that part and how if you are interested in me proceeding with just research alone, I can do that.
Just wondering on the truancy part of things, if there was some way down the road, like Patrick Burke, when he was talking about trying to do a daycare, not daycare, a kindergarten outdoor learning. If this is something that in the future, if they needed to actually be mandated to go to a setting of ten or less with a, a teacher or, or whatever, we need to make sure our kids are educated and by all means, they deserve the ability, if it's financial, they need to be, that needs to be addressed. I totally agree with you there.
Yeah, and I think intervention at, before it gets to, you know, the juvenile system, because that's where it seems to be happening, is that people, kids who are already in the juvenile system, they'll start addressing it. But, you know, we're going to see kids, just, you know, kindergarten first, second, who are not learning at all, whose parents just give up, don't have the resources, don't have, you know, I mean, there are a lot of different reasons of why it can happen. And they're, you know, by the time they get back to school, they're just really going to be far behind. And so these kids don't have a voice. You know, it's their parents don't send them to schools, schools may be online, they may only be there two days a week, they're 100% online, if the parents aren't making them do it, you know, I'll tell you, my kids wouldn't complain if I said, no, forget it. The wheels came off in my house the last two weeks and we just kind of threw the towel in. And, you know, I'm a type A, highly educated person and I just couldn't do it anymore.
Thinking alone on that, because I was even talking to some of the teachers about that and they're like, you know, we're not trying to overload them with work and, and we aren't and they're just not doing it. So it was, you know, so I, I was concerned with my daughter who's in her junior year and kind of just dropped the ball the last couple of weeks. So maybe, I don't know how hard it would be to come up with like a hotspot like we have at the library, well, by whatever, this would be a school district issue as well. Now, it's just so simple that a kid could actually open it up, it's automatically connected to that hotspot, they don't need Wi-Fi, they can, wherever they're at, they can be connected. So pretty much wherever they're at, they can be connected.
Yeah. And I think that Portland and Beaverton School Districts have done that. And so the truancy court, I think, would help identify, or the, I should say it's like a truancy program because it's not just court, because I think there's the Northwest Educational Service District and they have historically are in charge of it with truancy officers going out. So the truancy officers get the information from the school and then they reach out to the family and set up meetings with the school to address why the kid, why the child isn't going to school. So most of the work is done, it's my understanding, way before any threat of like, oh, I'm going to cite you into court, happens. And so this would be a way, at least to work for the, set up the program so that truancy individuals, I don't want to say officers, because I feel like that has such a negative connotation, would, I help the school district identify them and make outreach and then get those kids the resources. And then citing to court is like the absolute last resort.
Of my, my daughter, her surface or whatever she got from school, wouldn't work for the first week or so, we're like, do your homework. She's like, I can't get online. And finally, it was actually the tablet or whatever it was and we had to go back to the school and get a different one. So she was already behind from the get-go.
And I think that the school districts weren't taking attendance the last, you know, the spring. That's my, at least my kid's school was that they go to a Catholic school, but I've heard that the, the, a lot of the districts weren't, but that they will start taking attendance once they go back in the fall, whatever format they go back in. And so then, once they start taking attendance and they know who should be registered and who either isn't registered or isn't attending, that's when the truancy program would come into play.
Sure.
I had questions.
Yes.
Because the, I didn't get a hard copy of the packet and the little blow up is too small for my bad eyes, but I wanted to know what the, what the partnership is with DHL. I wanted to know what the, what the partnership is with DHS, and what the partnership is with, like, special ed? Because there's a lot of kids, and talking to case managers and educators in our system, where kids are on the spectrum, and they can't learn in this manner. They are unable to learn in this way. And they're not being supported according to state law on their IEP at home. And other kids, they're in an abusive situation at home where the internet is, and so they're not supported, and it's hostile. So they're like hiding in our community to avoid a hostile home situation. I just, there's a lot of stuff, as I keep hearing more and more teens and pre-teens doing self-harm, that I am just cognizant and make sure that we have totally encompassed the mental health issues that are sometimes a precursor, whether it's a special need, a disability, an abuse situation, a neglect situation that leads to the truancy, because I think the actual kids that are like, I'm just going to play hooky, is a small section of these kids. And they're kids that the parents are out of work, and they're living in their car, might be a section of these kids. Kids with special needs, I just think there's a lot of reasons, and I just am looking that I don't want to, at the court, to be doing something in a vacuum and look at, who are the other partners for services here?
Yeah, no, I completely agree with you. You know, my career prior to this had been as a deputy DA, and I handled child sex abuse cases. And, you know, what is just breaking my heart is knowing that a lot of these kids are like in this prison at home, and it's teachers and friends who report these instances of abuse. And if these teachers, and they don't have contact with their friends, or maybe they're only going to school two days a week, you know, they're not forming those relationships, they don't have a voice, they don't have a way to disclose it. And, you know, and so the mental health piece, the lack of education piece, it's just very nuanced. And so what was happening, I think the police department realized that when they did the research, if I'm looking at the right up here, that at this point, the juvenile department says they typically stay out of it. And oftentimes, they can do a delinquent, not a delinquency, a dependency proceeding, where it's like the kid is beyond, beyond the parent's control. That's the type of situation where the kids are playing hooky. And so, you know, that, and I think that's really hard to manage. I don't know if they're, the juvenile department, DHS, are getting the referrals for kids who are being abused.
Boy, hearing that, you say that, just, I mean, I'm just, I'm frightened for our children. I really.
It's really scary, and I think there was a report from the New York Times where, in New York, the number of reported child abuse cases was down fifty percent. And you know for a fact that the child abuse is not down fifty percent. The child abuse, I guarantee you, is up. It's just not reported, because the kids don't have access to their teachers and safe people who will report it. And I guess I feel like this is a way to kind of, a small way where we can identify kids who aren't in school, who aren't reporting for school, and try to get some outreach. So.
Have you, the mayor mentioned it earlier, the Connect St. Helens program. Have you in contact with that group of folks? Because that is, would help families and would help students that have a reason why they've missed twenty days, not just they're hanging out in the park, smoking a joint.
Yeah, I have not heard of that program, so I will look into that.
Is that, that's a huge, what?
Hypothetically, how it works is I share my experience with maybe being abused in a public setting, because I've dealt with the issues and worked through counseling, and what that does is that allows the door to open. So whether it be racial inequality, drug abuse, sex abuse, whatever those are, is how Connect works, is sharing your, how you overcame, this is what happened, trauma in my life, and this is what I did, and continuing to share that, that's how it works, basically, in a nutshell. It's a lot, there's a lot more psychology behind it than that.
Yeah.
But it's family and support. It's a background support.
Very, very good program.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as far as like, for my role, I think it would be, at this point, is to research what what is, dive more deeply into what is currently happening, what resources we have, and the current state of, you know, kids not going to school, and what investigation is going on, and then try to find out if there is a need for this. Because maybe there isn't even a need, maybe the Northwest Educational Service District is all over it already. I just didn't want to start going down a path that council wasn't, council wasn't interested in, and that, you know, I'm billing by the hour too, so I don't want to, you know, start spending money that, with my time, if this was a no-go, so.
No, Doug, we, we all, I think, kind of agree that we want to see where, what information, that on that, I know I do.
Keeping kids from falling through the cracks is important.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely reach out with, to Scott Stockwell about the Connect St. Helens as well, Amy, just touch base with him.
Okay, so is it, should I also, I think the next step would also be for me to reach out to them and the superintendent and prior truancy program.
Yes, yep.
And I think just getting some preliminary research done, and it may be that, once I do that, I realize it's not even a worth, you know, it's already been taken care of. I don't think it is, but, so.
I mean, it probably was dealt with in a, when we were going to school every day. It's a whole different deal now, and so it warrants having, just having the conversation.
Yeah, it's a whole different deal now.
So, so, go ahead.
I can see a couple of things. One, we don't have enough money, so we don't have equipment at home. Obviously, all we got to do is throw equipment at it. But then, if we got a home that won't allow me to study or do anything, the abuse, is there any way that you have, when this comes up in front of you, to determine whether it's abuse, lack of equipment, or is that beyond what you're allowed to do?
It, it would be identified with the school, the truancy officer in the school. So like, the first steps would first be to identify who's not going to school. And then the truancy officer through the Northwest Educational Service District would, they get the referral from the school, and then they go and meet with the family. And they would all be mandatory reporters. And so they would be able to identify issues, and then get them the proper referrals. And so it, it kind of is a way to give these kids access to someone who may be able to help them and refer them to DHS. And so, once the court gets involved, that's when, you know, if there is a DHS referral and a kid needs to be removed, that's a juvenile court issue. If there's abuse of a child, that's a circuit court issue for, you know, criminal charges potentially. And then if it's just a family who doesn't feel like dealing with online schooling, whatever the reason may be, maybe it's both parents are working. Maybe it's, you know, there are just so many different reasons that would, and they're not willing to do it, that would be where it would be referred to truancy court. And then they'd come in front of the judge, me, and I would talk to him about it. But I think setting up a program, at least, gives, opens, opens up what's happening in the home.
No, I hope they can find a high-bred model for education, where they can have like, half the student's error one week, and half the next week, and split classroom sizes in half, because for a lot of kids, that's all they have for their social network also, is school.
Yeah.
The thing that scares me is that by the time it gets to you, we put a lot of damage on that child. The mechanism is awful slow to get that child help, and when it really gets better, you see them, you see that student.
I would see the, I would see either the family, or if they're in high school, I'd probably see the student.
Somehow, we've got to figure out, through all of us, how to get to that child earlier. Because the teachers are going to be overloaded, and with this virus, they're not going to be as mobile as they once were. It sounds like we've got to get two steps ahead of the problem, rather than wait for it to get to you. By that time, it's pretty bad.
Well, yeah, that's why, to get two steps ahead of the problem, is to set up the program, because then you, you get the truancy officers on, and the the resources onboard to get it at the very beginning of the school year, before it ever gets to me. Like, I want to be clear that getting the referral, setting up the court, doesn't mean that every person just immediately goes to me. There would be a ton of resources and outreach before it ever got referred to the actual judge.
Amy, I appreciate you bringing this to us today.
Yeah.
Want to see your report?
Nothing else from me at this point.
Okay, Matt, or is Sam going to report as well?
No, Sam did provide a written report to you that's in your packet. He is unable to attend as he's on paternity leave right now.
Okay.
He's had a baby girl.
His wife.
Yeah, it's true, his wife had it, but yeah. Thank you.
All right, Matt, we're going to go, Sam, annual report.
Yep, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here for a second. So this report is for the last fiscal year, so through June thirtieth, just last month. You can see the general indication is favorable, not middle of the road, but not completely thumbs up. Obviously, we've had a lot happen over the last few months that has affected our budget. So I'm just going to quickly peruse this. Happy to answer any questions along the way or at the end. Doug, did you have something?
Yeah, can you widen the screen on your, on your, thank you so much, that helps us read.
Sorry, I've got a big thirty-two inch screen in my, in my office, so. I keep forgetting you're on a, probably an iPad or a Surface Pro, so.
Right, thank you.
Yep. So like I mentioned, obviously, a lot of things have happened over the last few months that has affected our budget. So on the general fund, our budgeted revenue for last fiscal year was nine point nine million. We ended up at ten point two, so about three hundred thousand dollars higher than anticipated. Overall, on the expenses, we budgeted to spend eight point one. We came in at seven point nine. I should also mention that this is before our audits. Our auditors come in around September, once I finalize everything for the year-end stuff, and then they'll give me the final, final numbers. But they're usually pretty close, within a few hundred bucks or a thousand bucks or something. Visitor and tourism fund, we were able to make it under budget in the expense side there. Community development fund, same thing, under budget there. Community enhancement fund, doesn't have a whole lot of activity in there, so no big worries there. The street fund, I wanted to point out that this last year, we collected ninety-four percent of what was budgeted. We did anticipate a decrease in that next year. With that being said, that doesn't affect any of our operations right now. It does affect future capital and projects that are on the list. So I know we've already talked with Sue, and we've kind of briefly mentioned about the intersection that was on First and Old Portland Road. That was originally set up for about five hundred thousand dollars to be built, and we've kind of put that on hold to kind of be built later on, but it's still through design and getting all set up. So that five hundred thousand dollars is listed in the budget, I believe, but it's not a project that we anticipate moving forward to, unless we have funding for it. On the enterprise funds, I wanted to note that we collected ninety-five percent of our water revenue, ninety-six percent of our sewer revenue, and a hundred and two percent of the storm revenue. If you recall, the reason the storm is at a hundred and two percent is because we made those changes to the code, in which it resulted in some more revenue coming in for that storm funded, which was the intended consequence. We have our, all of our internal funds, which is the equipment fund, IT fund, Public Works Operations Fund, and the Facility Fund, those all came in under budget and right on budget for revenue, so no worries there. And I don't want to step on Mike's foot too much here, because I know he's going to give a report and talk a little bit about this. But usually, every quarterly, I include a, just a little update on building permits, just because for me, that's kind of a big determination of where things are in the city. And you'll see in this two thousand nineteen-twenty, a huge jump in single-family residential permits. And Mike's going to talk probably more about this, so I'll try not to beat a dead bush too much. And then we have our SDC revenue that comes from all of those building permits coming in. The blue was our anticipated budget. You can see those numbers here, and then what we actually received this last fiscal year in those money. So we are getting some SDC money in, that's always good for projects, and as Sue continues working through those master plans, we'll continue to update that list of projects that are SDC eligible, so we can spend some of those dollars on some of our infrastructure needs within the city. That's about it for this specific section of the financial report. Are there any questions from the City Council?
Well, we have an opportunity, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, Doug.
Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Well, we have a opportunity, a good opportunity to weigh in on the SDC funds that, with the additional revenues of where they go and how they would be directed, or is all of that already projected? I don't see how we could project it if these are, we're getting this report now, and we're seeing that there's a surplus. How do we direct those surpluses?
So these blue bars that we do every budget year to kind of guess how much we're going to bring in to system and filling charges. For the most part, I, I am very conservative in my budgeting revenue. I don't want to anticipate a huge apartment complex going in this year, and then allocating those SDC funds to be spent on this specific project, and then
Right.
something happens, and it doesn't happen, and we don't get the revenue, and projects are pushed off. So all of the projects that are SDC eligible are outlined in the master plans that we have, and Sue can definitely talk about that if you would like. She's probably more appropriate for, to speak directly about those projects and the system development charge, if you'd like me to unmute them, to have Sue chime in.
Well, that's fine. I, you know, it was just a, it was just a question for the council to ponder of when, when the entire council can weigh in on what the priorities are. And in terms of, in terms of initial need, need, say like, say like integrating sidewalks together for safety issues. If there's, if there's places in, in a city that has, that could be linked up by sidewalks, and it's only a half a block, or three quarters of a block, or means going around an intersection, or something like that, we see those kinds of things as a need, and they might have been overlooked. That's one of the things that, that's one of the things that the council is for, and for us to bring that to the, to our staff, to say, hey, I think we, this surplus needs to go here, or there, or whatever. And that's all, that's all I'm saying. I don't know if we need a report, but I just want to, I want to make the council aware of that, and make certain that our citizens are aware of that as well.
Sue's sincere available. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, just, I, I totally agree with you, Counselor Morton, as far as being able to try to use funding, available funding to, to fill in some of those sidewalk areas. That's definitely been a huge priority, I know, of the council for the many, many years. SDC funds are very specific as to what we are allowed to use them for. And unless it's something that increases capacity, not bringing it up to a standard, so missing a sidewalk on a particular roadway, although it sounds like, gosh, that would increase capacity, because there isn't one there now, those aren't necessarily eligible for SDC fund spending. If there's maybe insufficient sidewalks on a particular section of roadway, part of the SDC funds could potentially be designated, if it was a project that was identified in that transportation system plan, and was specifically called out as being eligible for SDC funds. So those projects are all, I believe Matt has a list of all of those projects in. So those projects are all, um, I believe Matt has a, a list of all of those projects in, in the budget. Uh, I don't believe that it's itemized out to the extent of this is, you know, 40% eligible for SDC funding. And then if we do designate a project, gosh, let's move forward and do this particular project. And but it's only maybe 32% eligible, eligible for SDC funds. Now we gotta come up with the remaining funds to get that project going and underway.
And my question was specifically, uh, if, and you said, you, you, you commented that if we do. My question is, who's we? Is that the council? Is that the staff? Or is that a collaborative kinds of, uh, is that a collaborative kind of decision-making process?
I would say that's a collaborative, but definitely the, the council's final decision as to what moves forward. Those, all those projects are brought forward typically during the, the budgeting development. And then you guys make that decision as to what projects are priorities and should be moving forward.
Yeah, but the budgeting process is finished for this last year and we're seeing an over, we're seeing and that, that we've got an overflow of money, which it's, it's, uh, there's excess. And that my question is, okay, who makes up, who makes up the decision of how we use the excess? And you're saying, and you're giving us guidelines of how it's going to work. But I'm asking, uh, I'm asking the question, okay, when? And when is that going to happen and how is it going to happen?
Doug, I might be able to chime in with you, um, on that note. So when the auditors complete the final year and get all the numbers finalized and they know what that acts excess is, I will do a budget adjustment usually in January or February to update the beginning fund balances for this current year. And in the SDC counts for this, for this type of situation, it would obviously increase the beginning fund balance for this year.
Okay, so it's an overflow. I understand.
Correct. And then we, and then for system development charges over the last several years that I've done the budget here, we allocate to spend every single dollar. Now, whether we do or not, um, that's up to you as a council and staff to come back. And staff can provide you with a list of what projects are SDC eligible and what percentage and all those. And we, Sue and John and whoever might have those recommendation of what projects we could move forward with now. But that would definitely come to city council and be allocated through a budget process.
Thanks for sharing that for the good of the order. Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got a question on usage. Uh, here's a road with a sidewalk that's halfway missing. When they count usage, are they only counting the vehicles on that road? Because obviously there's usage of the sidewalk, although they're just people. But is the definition just of vehicles on the road?
No, they look at all modes of transportation, vehicular, pedestrian and the bicycle routes.
So, okay, so if the sidewalk would help more pedestrians, it is eligible. If there's no more pedestrians, it's not eligible. A percentage.
That, but in general, that would be a correct statement. But there's all different kinds of circumstances that apply to each different road. And the classification of road makes a difference as well.
So it's magic.
It's scientific.
Other funding sources to go with those SDC, do a lot of projects, I would imagine, right, Sue?
Oh, yeah.
So one, one form of mechanism would be, which our urban renewal is not there yet. Within the urban renewal, we could use partial SDC and urban renewal money to do projects.
That is definitely a potential, yes. Depending on what the project is, where it is, and if it's already been identified as a need.
Things are to come to the city of St. Helens.
Oh, absolutely.
Work has been done and it's been well thought out in planning and, um, and we don't spend our SDC money. There's, it's, we always have a surplus into the year.
Yep. And, and typically that comes from, we would love to do a project, but like Sue mentioned, it's only 50% eligible. We have to come up with 400 grand or, or something like that, so.
Something to go with it, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we struggle with. Any other questions?
Thank you for focusing on that.
Uh, so Mayor, the next two things on my list are action plans from the strategic work plan to go through. It is 2:55 and it's a good opportunity to take a 10 minute break if you would like.
Let's do it, yes.
Okay, so we'll take a quick recess. And if you're okay, Mayor, I'll leave the Zoom meeting on, obviously, and just so everyone is aware, we are still live streaming to Facebook and we are recording.
Yep. So if you need to mute, mute your computer on your way out. Matt, question for Darren is, are these services, is that why, does it keep kicking me off because it's old or what? Is it my Wi-Fi connection?
Do you need, do you need a house call?
Frustrating.
What do you have, Comcast?
Yeah.
And you're, and you're operating off Wi-Fi?
Yeah, but I'm living like, from my modem, I'm not even 20 feet and.
Do you have the Comcast modem?
Yeah, it's, oh, and I probably do for a new one, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'd go down the road with Comcast first, um, make sure that your, your modem is, you know, the latest and greatest one. I have problems with that at home, too.
So I, I, I ended up spending probably 120 bucks, um, and bought my own modem.
Oh, really?
Just from Best Buy. Um, and it's been fantastic.
Yes, as much as I pay Comcast, so you'd think I'd have better service.
Oh, yeah.
Are you using that Surface Pro, Mayor?
Yeah, yep.
Maybe, do your other devices seem to disconnect, like your phone or other devices from your Wi-Fi? Or is, is it just the Surface that seems to disconnect on you?
It seems to be the Surface.
Well, bring it in next time, next to your time you're in here. I'll, I can give it a once over and.
You guys are all due for replacements this year, so.
Yeah, because I go into my, good, Matt, good, because I go in and the Wi-Fi's on and it just, the Surface disconnected, so. But yeah, like, like you said, my phone doesn't have issues with it, you know, so.
Yep.
Maybe I'll do both, get a new, we'll get new whatever devices and get a new modem, so.
Yeah, you guys are due anyway. And in looking at other counselors, uh, Surface Pros, I can't even log into them. With there's, the admin login that I would normally use has been lost and, um.
Thank you, Santa Logic.
Yeah, Santa. So, um, I just, there, there's no record of, of the administrative login for those. So there's nothing I can really do to them. They're, they're pretty much bricks at this point. Unfortunately.
Counselor Topaz agrees.
Yeah, I think I've looked at his the most of anyone's. But it's all part of the gig, so I'm happy to do it.
So Mayor, uh, Counselor Carlson did chat with me, um, through the Zoom chat. She says that she is here, she's just, uh, needs to chat with her doctor on a call, so she is listening. Um, but she just needs to turn off her video and sound for right now.
Perfect. Okay, and then so we're waiting on John.
Yep.
And then we'll get started.
John is, uh, getting on right now.
Yeah, it looks like it.
I was here the whole time. I just didn't see me.
All right, so Matt, we'll continue on with your presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this is gonna be your first round of action plans. Um, these are intended to be one-page documents that you, uh, and any citizen and member of the community can go find online to figure out what is going on with a certain project that's listed on the strategic plan, where staff is at with that plan. Um, and if it's, uh, still estimated completion date is going to be done on time. Um, or if there's any barriers, um, to finishing that project on time. Each department will report to the council every six months in this new kind of format. And this is that time to go through their action reports and update you on anything coming down the line or anything new with their department on top of these action sheets that are from your strategic plan. Okay, so we'll kind of go through these one by ones slowly as first and, um, you'll start to, I think, kind of get used to this system as we continue to go throughout the year. So in the first section of each action plan, you'll have a quick little summary. It identifies the lead department. We've kept it at department instead of staff level, so you know if it says admin that you can probably come to John or I and we'll be able to tell you the admin department action plans are split up between myself, John, Rachel, Kathy. And then we identify which specific goal and tactic that this action plan relates to. Give you a quick project summary of what the project is and the estimated completion date that is from staff.
So the way that, I just wanted the council to know that the way this is working is that we are no longer having department reports unless needed. Unless we ask John or Matt a question about this and we want an update, but it'll be every six months roughly on these.
Every six months, every department will have an opportunity to come in and give a report, just like Mike from the building department is, is coming on after me.
Which will free that person up, but also allow us to dive more into the meat of the project rather than a little bit, little bits and pieces in every meeting.
Correct, I think with this idea is that it allows you as a counselor, counselors to be more involved in the departments and understand what's going on in those departments. That way, when we come to you with a budget request or issues, hopefully you're as educated as we can give you as far as what a department does, how it works and how it, how it goes through those processes.
Sure, and then when this type of stuff comes down the pipeline, that we actually go educate ourselves with that department. If you have any questions, run in prior to our meetings, you are as educated as you can be. And then whatever questions we do that do arise will be really good questions, more likely that may stump us or even the department head, so.
But um, you got a second? Can I, can I say something? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Years, quite a few years ago, when Dale Goodman was here as Public Works Director. I was working on some issues with another, another board and another committee. And the committee had a phenomenal, the committees that I've seen that are more transparent, where everyone can see how the project is coming, has a grid system of who the contact is, whether that contact has been made, checked off, and what else needs to be done. I'm sure that we've all seen those grid systems. And to share those with the council at first look, we can figure it out. And so can any citizen can figure out where, let's say, the Gable Road project is almost day by day. More week by week, and the entire project can be laid out in this grid system that is a, is to do and when completed and what's the next step. And so I've always been, I've always been looking forward to seeing that happen with the city. I've tried with not much success, but to get that, but I got it with, I think Dale Goodman started it and it kind of, it kind of has fizzled out. But Sue and Neil were very communicative when I would go in and ask them where we're at on certain kinds of things. I just hope that this is more collaborative in communication to the entire council. And even to many of our individuals who are interested in our, our citizens, so where a project is. That way, they don't ask us, then we don't have to go ask you, then I, then we have to get back to those citizens that way. It's all there online, and that's the beauty of the computer, and that's the beauty of working this way. What the department heads and what the staff is working on, we should be, we should be able to see very easily. If there is confidential material that needs to be held back, well, so be it. But otherwise, we need to be, and our citizens need to be a little more enlightened about where we are and where, what we need to do on each of our projects, and I can see that, I can, I'm, I'm looking forward to that day when I see that.
So that you'll recall that we, with our goal setting, I brought the Gresham City Council goals and kind of the ownership. And that's exactly what this is. I don't think there'll be anything hidden in these projects from the, the public, and it will have a contact person is responsible for each project. They are responsible, whether it be Matt, whether it be Public Works, whether it be Library, whatever. And that's, that's the beauty of it, the contact person will be the public to call, you know. So that's what this is all about, this is writing with our goals. That's what I was trying to talk about with our new agenda. You'll notice there's no department reports on here. And Matt's going to give us a brief overview of everything that we discussed.
Mayor, the problem with that is when the contact person is not available. Then, you know, we are, we don't see what's on paper and, and gritted out and the big picture of, of how the project is coming along. I do agree that the contact person is responsible for putting that information up as a communication source, not only to that person's, that department, but to the council and to our citizens. That's my point.
In looking forward, we haven't tried this, so let's try this, be patient, we're going to get this, we got a good staff that is working with us on these goals. And we're going to make this happen.
Yep, and, and to Counselor Martin's, Martin comment, we can easily, as you can see this lead department topic right here. We can easily add a contact person to each specific project. I am personally just going over the ones that I am in charge of. Brian or Mike will go over the ones that he's in charge of and so on and so forth. So we can very easily put a contact name and a number and email up here on this header line. That way, each project has an identification and a point person that either you or any community member can get a hold of. So some of these are more fun than others. Some of them are more in-depth than others, obviously. This is a little bit more of a mundane one, but it's still a project that the city kind of needs to take on. So that is to review all job descriptions with FLSA updates. FLSA stands for the Fair Labor, Fair Labor Standards Act. And this is concerning just for the city to make sure that every job description, as far as overtime is concerned, is reviewed to ensure that people who are eligible for overtime are receiving it. And those that aren't eligible are not receiving overtime. So there's nothing really too demanding about this project. It's a matter of sending these to our local government personnel institute to review and give their thoughts. And then we would need to adjust, anybody that does need to be adjusted, we will update those job descriptions and for your approval as we move into the future. So we've had an estimated completion date of December 2020 for that. I don't see any barriers to completing this project on time. Any questions about this project? Okay, so I'm going to scroll down to the second one in administration, which also falls under goal number one, creating and maintaining an effective organization. This is creating an on and off boarding process for staff. This is something that was initially brought up by Counselor Topaz when he became a counselor, that there was no on or off boarding process or instructions or any kind of training manuals really for what we were doing. And as well as you guys need one for counselors and commissioners, which Rachel will be reporting on probably at the next meeting with a similar action sheet like this. We found that we did not have a process like this for just incoming and outgoing staff members. So we are creating that list. We're actually going to be using it next week when we have a new officer starting. So we'll be able to go through that checklist and see how everything works and make sure everybody's on board with that. So and just, I put August 21 as a first date, just because we want to go through it with some new employees and make sure that everything is kind of up to, up to snuff so to par and make sure everything's working well. But it involves a lot of departments, obviously, city recorder's office, Darren in our IT department, myself with the finance department and payroll. And then any corresponding departments that hire new employees as well as union presidents to be involved in through that process as well. So there's a lot of hands in the jar, but something that's easily obtainable. Any questions about that? The next goal is updating our personnel and IT policies. As if you can remember, just back a couple of meetings ago or last meeting ago, the city council did pass a new personnel policy. That was a number of years in the, in the process of working with Kathy Payne to get that updated. In addition to that, with our move from Center Logic to More Power IT, as well as the addition of our staff and Darren as our IT specialist now. I'm working with him to update and rewrite and create new specific IT policies for the city of St. Helens. So there's a lot that goes into that, More Power and Darren are helping us with that. I anticipate that to be approved by city council sometime in September. I do not anticipate there to be any real barriers or costs to completion, completing that project. The next project on the list is to review staff job descriptions to provide support for commissions. As you know, we have a number of commissions that I've outlined here and specific jobs that traditionally have supported them. Those commissions as far as taking notes, getting agendas ready and, and organizing basically those meetings. This does, this part of their job description has never actually been in their job description. It's always been something that has been kind of assigned as other duties. And so we would like to go back through those specific job and actually add those into the job descriptions. You'll notice there's a couple of questions that I'm not looking for answers for today. There are something that you can kind of ponder and think about, talk about with, as a, with John or myself or any department head to get your thoughts, but the Arts and Cultural Commission, which has always been a commission. We just wanted to throw out the idea, because they're not doing a, any kind of large projects now and kind of until something comes up as far as what they have done in the past with some of the gateway projects. Whenever we have a commission, obviously, there's a lot of public notice, meetings and minutes that have to be attended, done. And so we just wanted to throw out the idea of potentially creating this as a friends group for the city of St. Helens to operate and still meet and they still can complete some of those goals and tasks that the Arch and Cultural Commission have done on here. But they wouldn't have the requirements of having minute, actual meetings and minutes and be a little bit more free to meet when they wanted to, when projects come up and work, and work as they need it. So we wanted to throw it out there as an idea just to discuss later. The other one is the youth council. Obviously, this was started by Keith Locke and it's now kind of headed up by Counselor Carlson. And there is no current staff assignment for support for this youth council. So the question that I just wanted to ponder, like I said, we're not looking for a direct answer right now. But something to think about in the future is, does the youth council need somebody as a staff to hold those meetings? They are still considered a commission in our charter, so they do require meetings and minutes and agendas and everything like that. But this is also a potential friends of group. And I know I've had conversations with Counselor Carlson and also Shawna Duggan from our rec department that they would be open to the idea of creating a friends of rec group specifically for youth. So they could still do many of the things they do as a youth council, but still have the available to kind of meet as needed when projects come up.
Matt, I, I, let me speak to that if I could, can I?
Sure.
One of the, I think this is a, this is a perfect segue into partnering with education in a sense in our school district. And being that the recreation group is already partnered with, with the school district, I think it's, I think it's a perfect fit. Teachers and advisors in, in high schools and, and middle schools are perfect individuals to oversee meetings and that kind of thing or advisorships. So I agree with what you're saying.
Counselor Carlson, did, did you want to speak at all? You started to say something.
I just thought I would just follow up because it may have been instigated by Keith Locke, but Keith, Mousen, Keith Locke and myself actually have started this. And I've been alone by myself for the last two years, so just as a point of fact, I've been doing it by myself. I did talk to the kids and the last meeting and this past meeting, and they are very interested in being a friends of the rec group. Because what this group is interested in is making our community a better place for young people. And so that seems to be a better home for them. I asked them about school leadership and things and they're like, no, this is a unique group because the youth council group or friends of group. A person doesn't have to go to St. Helens schools to participate. They can be homeschool, they could be at a charter school, they could be, you know, going to school in Scappus. If they live in St. Helens School District, they can participate. And so they thought it's a unique niche. And in talking with Shawna, she was very interested, the kids are very interested, and the projects, they do seem to fit there. So I just, I just thought that would be a home. They, we've never had staff to help, so I think that that's nice that they'd have a home. You know, as opposed to just being out there and, you know, kind of working yourself. So I think it's a good idea, that just needs more vetting and more process.
Yep, so we'll continue working on that, hammering out all the details and likely come back to the council at a future meeting with some ideas to move forward on that. Any other questions about this project? The only thing other to mention is that the process for adding these to job descriptions does involve going through the ASME Union. As the Community Development Assistant, Public Works Office Assistant, Administrative Building Special, Administrative Building Specialist and a library assistant all, are all part of the ASME Union. The accountant job is a unrepresented position, so, and that was added into the position, job description when the city council approved this new job description back several months ago. So I'll go into the next one, council direction on city-owned property for development. This was something that was brought up to the, among the city council several months ago, and we haven't really done anything with it. I wanted to give a quick update that I have had Sue and Jacob working kind of in between projects as they can fit it in to create a map of all the city-owned property in St. Helens, as well as descriptions for every single one of those properties. The idea is that these two things would be put together for you to review as a city council and discuss at your leisure and decide if there are any properties that you want to look at redeveloping or getting ready to potentially sell for development or anything like that in the future. If there's land that you want to keep specifically for parks, whatever that future may be for those properties. It was something that was brought up by, I can't remember who specifically on the city council. But something that's always good to review every now and then, so you all get an understanding of what property is owned by the city around the community. So we are working on that list and I should have that to you in your counselor boxes, probably the next few weeks or so. I will have a draft version of all that information tied together with descriptions. And then you will have some time to talk with Sue, talk with Jacob, talk with John, talk with anybody you would like. And then we'll set up a future meeting date to have those discussions among counselor if you would like. Any questions about that?
This, the city has a lot of oddball properties and little, little chunks of properties here and there. And that was, I think it was discussed about a year ago that this came up in conversation and it would be nice to have an inventory of them all.
Correct.
Then we can follow up and go, where are we on this? Check. Where are we on this? Check. Because then it just doesn't sit out there in la la land.
Matt, I'd like to go back a minute to the arts commission. As you say, a lot of times they're basically just paddling in the water, but then when they get to heavyweight projects, that's when they're going to need staff help. I'm wondering about the mechanism was changing from, we'll say paddling to a heavy work.
So that can be discussed as we kind of move along this process. My initial thought, as you were saying that comment, is that when they would need staff help, when there is needed assistance for that. We can still have that assigned staff member work with that, that friends of group. The biggest difference between a friends of group and a commission base is that you don't have all the requirements of meeting notices and minutes and everything else that you have to do. They could come in when they were available or when the staff person was available and meet and discuss and find out what they need.
Yeah, being official, having requirements gets to be important, even though the workload is low. And when you have a heavy workload, then it gets to be obviously important. That's really the question, because this is a group that. That's really the question because this is a group that will have highs and lows in its workload.
True. And when there, when there are the highs and they have those big projects and they need to have public hearings and public forums and everything, that is something that the council and staff can hold as well to assist those Friends of Groups when those processes may come up in the future for bigger art projects like the Gateway Funding Projects.
You might want to mention a bit about the history of the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee as well, a commission that integrated with parks and became Parks and Trails. And that's one of the, when the, when the membership started to fall off and with the pedestrian, that bicycle and pedestrian group, it just become almost dysfunctional. And so there was no kind of other alternative but to try to combine the two groups. And you know what? It's worked out extremely well, very effective, I think.
All right. So I'm going to move along. This next one, I'm going to unmute Brian, our police chief, or Brian, feel free to unmute yourself now. This next one is about the facility of the police station. Obviously, you're well aware that we are kind of in the midst of a study for the police station and what that may look like, where it may go. We've come back to the city council, you've made a decision to at least move forward on one site. We have met with McKenzie a few times, we're meeting with them again as they finalize what the floor plan may look like, what the rendering of the building may actually look like, as well as looking for a cost estimate of this project and how do we go about funding. So I've chatted, we've had some discussions internally with the police chief, McKenzie and John and Rachel about how we start to look at the future of what this may be and what this may become. Obviously, one of the easiest ways to go about funding is a potential bond in the future. That's usually the way these kinds of facilities go. And what I would like to ask the city council is if you are open for some kind of a creation, and we would come back to you with specifics about this, but we would like to put some kind of an ad hoc committee together that is full of community members that have both expressed interest and displeasure for multitude of reasons as far as where do we build a police station? Why are we building a police station? How much is it going to cost? How are we going to pay for it? But obviously, there's a lot of community feedback and input that we want to gather before doing anything official. And as we're starting to kind of realize these architectural renderings and floor plans and cost estimates, it gives us something a little bit more tangible to talk to the public with. And so what I'd like to recommend, and if you're okay with it, is creating an ad hoc committee to start meeting a few times just to kind of spitball some ideas and talk about their thoughts and opinions. And I'm happy to take any comments or questions that the council may have on that recommendation.
More community, more better. I have thought that it was time to get the community involved in this. This is a big commitment and we need to not do it in a vacuum.
Do we have a overall, I'm going to call it an attitude plan for what kind of buildings the city should build to be historic? Or is that not part of the process?
There is some basic stuff that Jacob and Jenny could probably better explain as far as the standards for what the building may be. There are some architecture discussions that may come up during the rendering process of how it looks and where it's located and how it looks depending on where it's located. Just because there are guidelines in each area. But there are specifics for how, you know, big the building may be and that kind of stuff. We're not quite there to that type of discussion yet. We haven't even gotten a final rendering back, which is something that would obviously go through planning. And then you have the whole planning commission process in that process if we were to ever go forward in building.
Yeah. Well, the renderings would go to architectural style. Does it match the river or whatever?
Correct. Thank you. Correct. And that would be part of the feedback for the, for the committee to look at and give those thoughts about what the building looks like, what colors we chose, you know, where a tree is and where it isn't, those kind of things. Any other thoughts from council?
Great idea. I think it's a great idea to get an ad hoc committee to get together and in favor of, not in favor of, I want to, you know, both sides. And what I can say, just from my own experience, is make sure that they tour the current facility to understand why this is being discussed. Okay?
Yep.
It'll be my only, my only thing is to make sure they have a tour, almost like the first meeting.
Yep. Councilor Locke or Morton, do you have any thoughts?
I don't have the meetings on either Tuesday or Thursday night.
We'll do so. So right now, just to update you, we are waiting for a topography study on the site that was chosen by the city council. Once that topography study is done, then we'll have a more, better identified floor plan and rendering of the building. We're still kind of on schedule, I think, to be able to complete this definitely by the date that I have put up here, which is December 2020. And that's the kind of the final plan of what the feasibility study would be. And then from there, the council would decide how to move forward with anything. Any other questions about the police station that either myself or Brian can answer?
When will that topography be back for us?
The topography study will be back next week.
Okay. I think we'll probably pleasantly surprise.
Yep. Okay, great. So the next one, I'm going to kind of tag team a little bit with John because he can also speak to some of the discussions that he's had with some of our leadership. This is an action plan that we would like to add into the strategic plan. This is a fiber service utility study. If you'll recall, we had done an initial study of what it could look like. And the fiber service utility was placed in the longer-term projects list. So it's in the future projects list. As money has come available for this project and that project, there is definitely some thought process in the legislature right now for broadband and the expenditure of the infrastructure that is required to do this. We believe that some of the funding that the state is, will provide the cities now, that a study like this, a more in-depth study compared to what was done before, which we have a rough estimate cost from a couple consultants, it would be about $70,000 to complete this really in-depth study. Previous studies of other cities that some of these consultants have done is, are in the range of 200, 250 pages. So it's a pretty in-depth study of pretty much A to Z of everything. But assuming that these costs can be accounted for and paid for by some of those, the CARES Act funds, we would like to move this plan and action sheet from the future list into the strategic plan, and it would fall under the economic development goal and tactic. And it would take probably about six to seven months for this study to be completed. And then from there, it would, the ideal is that the city council would have a better process and ideal of what a fiber service utility may look like for the city of St. Helens and if you want to move forward with such a project. So I'll ask John if he wants to add any tidbits of information. John?
Yeah, I would just add that the communities that we've surveyed and campus, you know, their municipally operated utilities, you know, they're 80 to 85% of their patrons are coming from the community and utilizing the public system. And it's low cost, reliable, high speed, a lot of satisfaction, a lot of opportunities to get messaging out. And it's, you know, it's, you know, fiber is a, you know, is the new water of sorts. You know, it's really kind of essential to our lives to be able to communicate. And to the extent that we can, you know, provide secure resources that aren't local resources, I think it's a great, great thing to move forward. The time is right.
If this could proceed 5G.
So 5G is built off the fiber network, fiber to home is what we're contemplating here. That relies on a robust network of fiber to send those, basically, signals out.
So it's part of the 5G?
Yeah, it's essential to the, it's the backbone for 5G.
I think we've all discussed this and we, we've already all agreed that we want to pursue broadband. We, we already had our own kind of little bit of feasibility study, but I like this idea of going out a little bit beyond that just to see. And because it shouldn't just be for, ours was a barely reaching the outskirts of town. I think it's definitely reached the outskirts of town, so.
Yeah. And the $70,000 cost potentially encompasses Columbia City and Scapoose as well. Now, whether they want to contribute financially to that was an initial consideration before we talked to you. But as it becomes more apparent that the CARES funding that is available and coming down from the feds to our local city here, it appears that we can use some of those funds to do broadband studies. And so we would like to use some of that funds available to complete a study. Whether Columbia City and Scapoose want to contribute or not, that would be up to them. But it makes more sense for the economies of scale to include those communities.
Absolutely.
So Mayor, it sounds like you're okay moving, moving this up into the strategic plan and seeing about moving forward with this study?
I think it's time for a discussion later on. This is just a presentation of your mechanism.
No, this is them actually wanting to start pursuing grant funding through CARES if it's available and looking at it and moving forward with the ability study for the city of St. Helens, out to Columbia City and to Scapoose.
And most likely, if you were to say okay, the next step would be for, John and I, we still have a couple of meetings lined up with some other people. But we would come back to the city council with a request for a proposal that would, you would have an opportunity to read through and give any thoughts for that RFP to go out to do this kind of study.
Well, it's kind of my indication that it's, sometimes it's kind of tough to make a decision in work session. I'd like to chew on it for a bit and make a decision tonight in our regular session. If that's okay with the mayor.
No, that's a good point. I was actually wanting to kick these type of ideas up too later so they can be discussed here. And then if anybody's listening in would like to, so that's exactly where we are going to go with that on this type of decision-making in the future, even if it's very even, something just like this where we're looking for grant funding or maybe even just a potential group wanting 500 bucks. There, that's going to get kicked to the evening, so.
Good. Yep. Awesome. So that was the last of the administration plans. I have four additional ones that are specific to finance and IT. And I'd like to go through those if that's okay, and then we'll move on. So the first action plan is the renovation of the front facade of the Utility Billing and Court Department. It's also kind of been named the Bennett Building, as I have come to learn more about it. Obviously, the Utility Billing and Court Department went through a remodel the past few months, ran into an issue with the windows up above. The ones that were replaced on there obviously were not what was kind of pictured in the final rendering and that was called out by the Planning Commission as well as not going through them to get approval for the selection of windows that was done. And so that's kind of started a long discussion between the Planning Commission and Jacob as well to go through the historic guidelines and make sure that we are following all of our own rules. And obviously, this is a public facility and we want to make it look as well and, and good as we can. When I originally came to the city council to look at these renovations, I focused mainly on the internal renovations and was not planning on doing any of the exterior. When we did the interior work, we had to replace a lot of the HVAC equipment and everything inside. We got rid of the drop ceiling. That opened up the potential for the windows that weren't usable before. And so we had cracks in the windows and had to replace those. It's kind of developed into something unintentionally. And so now we're looking at having to do renovations on the front side and meet all of those historic guidelines that Jacob and Jenny and the Planning Commission have kind of outlined. The Planning Commission met yesterday to discuss some of what they would like to see on the front. I've also asked Jennifer Pugsley, who now sits on the Planning Commission, to help out with this project. So she can kind of be our quick go-to guide since obviously she's done the real estate building across the street. So she has experience in doing restorations like this. And so it would be great to have her feedback and somebody who's directly on the Planning Commission to do that. What I wanted to make you aware of is that obviously doing historic guideline renovations is going to be a little bit more expensive than $5,000. And that was what we initially put in the front kind of budget for this. So the next step to do this properly is going to be to likely go out for an RFP or ask for some quotes for an architect to come in and give their rendition and materials list, go through the historic guidelines with Jacob and Jenny to come back to the Planning Commission. I wanted to talk with you as a council and you're welcome. Like Doug mentioned, this is a perfect opportunity to think about this for the next few hours or even till the next meeting if you want to and come back to a decision. But what I'm looking for is if we want to go forward with this, I have to hire an architect. That's likely my, and this is just a guess, but it's likely going to be $10,000 or $15,000 just to get the architect. Then you start asking about the renovations and some of the materials that may be required in the historic guidelines. Then you get into renovating the actual frontage of the building, which if you've been there recently, there are a lot of issues. And so when we open something up, it's likely going to bleed into something else as Mike's nodding his head knowingly. So we're, we're anticipating a job and it's not something that was anticipated. Obviously, it's nothing that we want to just slap on some paint and be done with it. It's a public building. It's in the historic district. We want to preserve the look and the feel of it. And that was definitely apparent for the Planning Commission and their goals for restoring the building. So just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on that initially. And then if you would like to later decide on potentially asking for quotes and moving forward with an architect to come back with some renderings and ideas. So I'm happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have at this time. You're in, nut?
So I think what we'll do is we'll just review a lot of these later. Real quick hypothetically, just we'll go to the meeting, the meat of the questions later tonight. Okay, Matt? So do a recap. You kind of get the questions drawn up because I'm going to come to you towards the end of our agenda tonight for questions on all these. Okay?
Yeah, that would be great. All right, only a couple more, then I'm done. The next project on my list was to redo the Business License Code Rules Forms and Processes for our business licenses. Some of that has been done. I wanted to show you on the Business and Development section of our website. You'll see a lot more links here for businesses in St. Helens. We also have a local business directory. So this is updated with all the business licenses that we have obtained within the city of St. Helens as of last year. So anybody can go on here and they are set up by category. And then you can get a business license. Each person that has a business can go on here and edit. They can put their store logo, they can put their, any kind of website or contact information on here. So that is a tool that you should be well aware of and let anybody know about that business.
Go back to the category, Matt.
Are you looking for yourself?
Yeah.
I believe your business is under service.
Yep. Now further the search to yard care.
Well, so that was part of the question is. Well, so that was part of the question is kind of setting this up.
Oh, it's not done right.
Brick shawl yard maintenance. It gets pretty descriptive as far as what kind of categories you want. Now, this is all customizable. It is something that we can kind of refine and retune as we move forward. But we can add as many categories and I I can do that on the back end of our website, so.
This would be nice if you could just type yard care or house cleaning or whatever, you know, as your search. And it pops up for all the guys, so.
Yeah, yep, so they can be refined, but I just want to let you know that it is available in there. And then some of the links of the business in St. Helens, obviously, we get a lot of inquiries about. Potentially moving their business to St. Helens, so we talk about the St. Helens advantages, some of the directions and. And transportation opportunities that we have as far as PDX Hillsborough Airport, CC Ryder. How close we are to Portland and everything like that. And then we do provide links to the Columbia County Economic Team as well as the Chamber of Commerce as well directly from our website.
Right up there, why not say?
I could change that to say why not say no. So that is kind of part of this process. The business license code I've gone through and rewritten pretty much from scratch, just because our business code has been. Was so old that it, there were so many changes that it was just easier to start from scratch rather than trying to. You know, track changes in in the already produced code, so. Once those codes are reviewed by the attorneys, then they will come to the city council. For review, so they are at the attorneys right now. I anticipate them to be done. Probably the next month or so, and then we will work on getting that on the council agenda for review and updates and and everything like that. So that's estimated to be done by October. I do anticipate that to be done in time, so no issues there.
Matt, will that need a public hearing on that?
Well, yeah, there'll be a first reading and a second reading. I've also thought about reaching out to the chamber and their ambassadors to get their thoughts on the municipal code changes, just give them an opportunity. And so that's in the works as well, but I wanted to wait until I get a final OK from attorneys before kind of releasing it, so to speak. This kind of goes along with the business and development website. It's updating the website. So just what I just showed you with everything like that. That is pretty much done. All I'm waiting for is the business code to be updated, and then I can update finally do any finalizations on the website. So that has an October twenty twenty date as well.
Somebody wake up Steve.
Yep, so this one I'm going to hand actually hand over to Darren that way because I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing my voice. So Darren, do you want to talk about this action plan about our IT infrastructure improvements?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Greetings, Mayor and Council. What a roller coaster ride twenty twenty's been with the IT department. And I've been strapped in the chair and handling it to the best of my ability, but. Was not expecting to get hit with a ransomware attack in in January that that put us on our heels and 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 caused a great deal of disturbance for. For staff and and the public as well, and seems like we've dug out of that now, finally. But it just made it very clear how vulnerable the city's IT infrastructure is. Everybody's vulnerable to some degree, but but we are so lucky as a city that that we didn't have to be in a position to have to pay a ransom to get our our files and our hard work of staff back. There are other counties and cities that are actively now paying ransoms for these things, so. So we got real lucky. We we actively caught them on the system and it was just. A happenstance, so we got very lucky. And so moving forward, as of May twenty twenty, the city has chosen to move away from Center Logic after, you know, more than ten years of service. I found Center Logic to be very reactionary and not very. Oh, you know. They weren't taking the the precautions I think they should have. I think they were just kind of building on on top of of projects and. And I just don't think that they were looking out for the the future, or or maybe they were they were. Struggling with other clients. It's hard to say, but. Ultimately, we decided to go with another local company, More Power Technology Group. I've been very impressed so far with them and and their their willingness to to roll up the sleeves and 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 hit the ground running and and. Taking care of a lot of things for staff. We still have a lot of long ways to go. You know, patching our vulnerabilities and and putting in new infrastructure. I'm working with them on a daily basis to. You know, to to procure new equipment. And most of the equipment that we had was leased through Center Logic, and that was monthly, Matt, maybe you can help me out, monthly charges or yearly charges.
Yeah, just added to the monthly charge that we sent to Center Logic.
Yeah.
Actually owning equipment and leasing it came with its own difficulties of we can't do stuff with it because we lease it. Instead of owning it outright and we can do what we want with it.
Yep, so in June, we we went down the road of replacing the firewalls in every building. So every building in the city has to have a firewall, which is a device that controls the network traffic in and out of public works, in and out of the rec center, city hall. Water filtration. Each of those has a firewall device, and we were we were leasing those eight devices from Center Logic and. And we've purchased those now, so the city owns that infrastructure, and so we can control that infrastructure. And before it would have been a phone call or a an email to Center Logic to have them go in there and poke around in the firewalls. And now we we own the system, so we can work on our own stuff, which is monumental in IT for for a situation like this now. It could have been years in the past, you know, the city wasn't big enough to warrant some of these things, but I think the direction we're going now. It warrants that, and in the same token, in in this month, we are we are replacing all the Wi-Fi. Access points and devices at each building. Those were another. Piece of infrastructure that was leased through Center Logic and incurring monthly charges, so. Our plan was more, let's let's buy the stuff and own it, and then we don't have to keep doing these monthly costs and then and then I can actually get on the the Wi-Fi controller and control the system, which I wasn't able to do in the past, so. So I know it's been a lot of, you know, upfront charges, but it's going to cut down the the monthly and yearly subscription charges for leases. Over the years. The next big thing is going to be the new domain name, the the St. Helens Oregon dot gov and and staff emails. Away from the antiquated CI dot St dash Helens dot OR dot US, which was very popular, you know, twenty five years ago. When all the cities were doing that, but. Most of the cities are streamlining their 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 email addresses and and I think the St. Helens Oregon dot gov was a good way to go. I'm working with more power to rewrite or actually to write our internal IT policies. A lot of these are very boilerplate, but we really didn't have anything here, and like what Matt was talking about, the onboarding and offboarding process. IT policies and best practices are something that we would need to go through with all staff and and counselors and everyone else, so it's very important. We we have a lot of new and a lot of new infrastructure coming in over the next six months. I I'm always here to answer questions or talk to you personally about these things. More power has been has been with me every step of the way. They they show up. They they're there when they say they're supposed to be there. They have been very punctual. They're very smart. They they work with other entities. Wakayakam County is one of their clients, so so they know the governmental part of it. You know, as we continue to rebuild the process, you know, the city may need to incur IT expenses that were unplanned. You know, when you rip Band-Aids off systems, sometimes you you see the underlying issues and they need to be corrected. Instead of having workarounds and and. And temporary fixes that turn into permanent fixes, I'm hoping that we can move forward into more permanent solutions and more reliable systems for the city. It's about like, do you have any questions about that? I appreciate your time.
I said about time.
Oh, yeah, it's about time. Absolutely.
So that's it.
OK, all right, building semi annual report, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate your guys' time. So I was going to start with our action plans from the building department. And kind of walk through four goals or four plans that we've got. And starting at the beginning under. Thank you, Matt. Well, I can start with that one. So that's a building code enforcement process review. Basically, this is just one of those items that we need to review and update every once in a while. And during last year, we had a. Situation come up where we found that there's actually two pathways to correct one situation within our code, which creates confusion. So that's kind of one of the areas that we need to take a look at and remove those types of things. And then. There has been some talk, a little bit amongst John, Matt, myself, and I believe Chief Greenway. About code enforcement officer position in the department and possibly combining it with an inspection position. I don't really, I don't really have a whole lot of details on that if either one of those guys wanted to speak up about it. But that's just been kind of an idea floating around to combine code enforcement into building. And for the purposes of. Kind of killing two birds with one stone and adding staff to be able to do those items. Basic steps that we got to take are just to go through the code, like I said, to rewrite it and come up with updates for it. And then have those reviewed by the attorney. And yeah, limited cost of the review of that code are there and financially, I'll let. Matt speak on hiring additional person as far as the funding goes. But we'll be probably picking up that conversation and continuing it on. So any any questions about that particular item?
Question from Matt on the funding.
Well, it's part of the general fund. It would be a new position, one that was reduced and taken away. But we knew that it was it was coming, so this is not something, you know, totally new to us. I've been chatting, John's been chatting with Mike as well as Brian, just like Mike was saying about. Hiring somebody and it really comes down to if we can hire the right person. Not everybody wants to take a part time job. Not everybody wants to take a code enforcement job. That is not a fun job. First for most people, so John, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that I think Mike's not. I think he's understating his the demands on his time as far as building inspect average inspections per day, the number of plan reviews. And just being otherwise failed with the administrative piece of the department and. It feels like the time, you know, the time is right that we have the capacity to bring somebody on. The county isn't a resource. They've indicated that they would not like to be as much so. They're busy too. The piece about code enforcement is. Something of a. Code enforcement and building inspection don't necessarily fit together terribly well in some cases, but in some cases they do. They're more of a. More human side of it, working with people and dealing with. Tall grass and all the junk yards and all that kind of complaints that are not specifically building inspections, but more the. Tidiness of the community. And when I was at the city of Centrally, we had a similar kind of arrangement with a retired police chief. Came back, did code enforcement a few days a week. Some part time building inspector folks came around and it worked out pretty well.
I think it's a horrible idea. That's just me. I'm not kind of talked down to your ideas, but I just think it's a horrible idea. Absolutely. How many building permits do Columbia City do this here? Because we also serve them. That's what I want.
Which part is a horrible idea?
The combination of a code enforcement in a. Building official, one one person. I think it's just me personally. I think it's a horrible idea.
Well, it brings capacity to the having the inspector onboard component of that keeps them busy during the building. You know, building season and then the code enforcement season for year round, so.
Well, you know, I've always talked really loudly on this subject, John, and we had three, we had three building inspectors in oh seven, oh six, oh seven. We have one official. Who needs somebody underneath him, and it needs to be a full time person. It needs to happen sooner than later. That's just me speaking here. The rest of the council, you could talk to some of the contractors out there. And you'll get a feel of what's being said. And Michael's doing a phenomenal job. That's not what I'm saying. They know he is slammed.
So we're we're asking for a part time and you're advocating for a full time, so. Sounds like there's support.
Moving on to the next one, flooding floating structure code amendment, again, just kind of pointing to the fact that. Our our codes have to be updated on occasion. Primarily looking at areas where we can. Update some of the prescriptive paths that are in the code. Some of the references there are either non existent anymore or are not up to current standards. So again, just going through the code, have the attorneys review it and then send it to you guys for approval. And biggest barrier on on this kind of of work is just the allocation of time to get it done. It's it's never seems to be as a urgent matter, but it is something that needs to be taken care of. Any questions on that particular plan?
How much of these code changes are dictated by state, federal and other agencies that? They've just got to change and we've got to react to.
Sure, so the 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 first two plans that I talked about with our enforcement, building code enforcement and the floating structures code, those are both just within our own municipal code. And. As far as the mandates from the state, we pull on some of the state standards, like through our floating structures. Ordnance, we actually pull on some of the state standards as reference for the builders to use. But they don't actually have jurisdiction, at least the state building codes doesn't have any jurisdiction over floating structures, for instance. And so it would just be handled at the local level through our local municipal code. But I go ahead, sorry, sir.
One of the problems on the river is you got the federal people with its regulations. Does that get into any of these codes?
Not not with our structure codes, no. I they have other permitting processes that these that through Department of State lands that people have to go through. But there's not really any overlap into the building codes.
OK, the overlap is with the person with the floating structure, not with your office.
Correct.
OK, thank you.
Yep.
So just just like the floating code, you're you're just looking at the code and changing some things? Are you going to add some things? What's?
Not so much it's it's not so much for adding as it is just updating. There there's references to older codes that are in those that need to be updated. Specifically to the floating structures ordinance that we have, we have some exhibits that point to building methods. I personally can't even read them. They're out, you know, they're just outdated. And I've even looked at our our recorded copies of them. I still can't read them. So they just need to be updated and 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 a little bit more intuitive, especially with the prescriptive paths that we provide. OK. So moving on to the next one, thank you, e permitting. So this is one that we are actively in. We've been working for the better part of this year of getting new permit software implemented into the city. This software comes from the state. There are eighty five jurisdictions that have the same exact software. Including Scapoose and Columbia County. And when we are done, it will be also St. Helens and our our. Columbia City as well as doing this alongside with us. And so. One of the benefits of that is is that our contractors, our local builders, they will only have one method, one process to go through. No matter which jurisdiction they're walking into, which is a benefit for them. And also is going to help us with our processes in house. For instance, mechanical, over the counter type permits, they don't even have to come in. They can actually apply for those. Um, they can actually apply for those and get those online on a Saturday night at ten o'clock if they want to, uh, for contractors. Homeowners and, uh, those folks will have to still come in and, and talk to us, but it's still gonna be a helpful process for them. So the steps that we're taking to get that done, the, one of the largest steps for us is the training process. We actually just wrapped up all of our scheduled trainings and we're moving into live testing environments now, uh, every other week until we go live. Um, migration of our data from Springbrook, um, this has been a challenge, uh, for us uh, from the onset of it. Um, and there's been a, a list of things I could go through of things that have uh, slowed that process down, um, starting with like Darren talked about, the, uh, the event that happened in January. Um, our changing from center logic to more power, uh, which was not a negative move in my opinion, but a, a, a great one. Um, but it, uh, but it did slow that process up. So we are getting through the first kind of phases of that migration. Um, and more power has been working directly with the state to get that to happen. And then after they complete that process, they move right into the GIS data and get that migrated over. And once we have, uh, kind of some final dates on when the data transfers, that's when I can actually start providing some go-live dates uh, for the implementation. But we do anticipate, uh, go-live, uh, August, September. Um, is what we're looking at. Any questions on the, uh, implementation process?
Is, does any of this cross over into planning?
Planning will, uh, be able to, uh, with regards to building permits. Um, they will be a part of the review process and there will be some points at which they, um, uh, you know, if the plan goes through to them, they'll be making inputs into this system. Um, there is a planning module that's available through, uh, through Excel, the software provider. But at this time, we're just sticking with the building permits. Any other questions? All right. And so this is part two, uh, of two, uh, for our e-permitting process. One of the things that's kind of come up uh, through this process is, is seeing how the software has pathways available for us to start doing more things electronically, including plan submittal uh, and ultimately plan review. And so, um, this is one I'm kind of looking at to currently just looking at to kind of prioritize what kind of electronic services to provide. Um, you can really go to the moon with this whole thing. Uh, you can, uh, invest in a lot of different types of services. Uh, and of course, the technology that supports those services. But starting with, uh, kind of the top of the list, it seems to be just getting that, uh, submittal process down. And so what that's gonna look like to start with is just establishing our own in-house policies of how to handle electronic plan reviews and making sure that they're staying in line with also the uh, paper, uh, s- submittals that we get. And, and then of course, there is going to be some equipment. Um, it usually involves, uh, some software and, uh, larger screens to be able to review plans on. And, uh, there is cost for all of that. Um, but we did, uh, as we'll discuss during a minute, uh, we have a new, uh, fee schedule getting proposed, which includes a technology fee. Um, this is kind of a new method of, of moving this direction. Uh, but other jurisdictions are utilizing it. Um, and what this fee does is it, uh, it tackles a couple of things that we are encountering as we move into, uh, e-permitting. One, the charges incurred by, uh, transactions. So that helps cover those costs. And as well as funding for, uh, the equipment that we have to keep our current system or the new system going, as well as to grow into other services, um, creating a fund to kind of support that effort. And the biggest barriers, of course, are always gonna be cost for something like this. Um, initially, I think the cost will be low as we, I've talked with John a little bit about maybe possible surplus equipment around that we can use. Ex, I'm sorry, uh, the e-permitting already provides us with a base software, uh, called Blue Beam. Uh, if you have ever heard of that, but it is, it's specific to construction drafting and different things so that you can do plan reviews. And they, they give us a base version of that as part of, uh, as part of the new e-permitting system. Um, but that'll be the next, uh, step would be to look forward to other electronic services for our, uh, for our projects out there.
A question for you, you know, I'm in the process of just drawing up and I'm, I'm not doing it. I'm getting some help with it, but it, it's a computer program that costs up twenty-five hundred bucks for this program. Now, is that something in the future that would be compatible to like just be able to PDF the file and, and shoot it to you guys? And it shows, um, most of it shows most all the specs and anywhere there's some engineering, um, like whether it be girder trusses, um, or, or trusses or stuff like that. Is that something that, uh, that we're, that we're talking about here? Would it speed up the process? Would it allow builders to be more of a, um, on custom homes, architects, um, in a sense too?
Yeah. So when it comes to, um, electronic, uh, plans and whether it's the production of those plans, review of those plans, um, the building industry has already moved in this direction. They're there. They are creating plans electronically. They're sending them back and forth between owner, uh, designer. They're doing all of this already. Really, we're the ones that will be catching up with that and, and, and completing that full circle so that they don't, they can just continue that electronic, uh, process right on into getting their permits as well. And so, but yes, like Blue Beam, for instance, I have used that in the past, uh, on the, on the private side of, of things. And it's, uh, it's a program that allows for, uh, uh, instant comments to be made on one document between uh, uh, an architect, an engineer and the owner, and they could be, you know, several hundred miles apart from each other. Uh, so it does help expedite things. Um, as far as for plan review, I've never done it in a plan review, uh, with respect to plan review, uh, but I could see the benefits of having the ability to make the comments directly on the plans and send those back and forth uh, so that they can make their adjustments.
Yeah, cuz I mean, the, the technology with the computers is pretty crazy how you can just, uh, everything. Um, so this is a question not, uh, out of the norm and it's probably not one you could answer. But right now, say if I wanted to submit a plan, but I don't wanna pay the SDCs right now, but I wanna make sure the plan's gonna fit and that everything checks out. Is that something that we do right now? Or do you guys want, or does the city itself want the whole twenty thousand dollars with fourteen of it is SDCs? Can I just pay six?
So the way that the, in terms of like a single-family dwelling, uh, the plans come to us, uh, application comes to us and a, and a deposit is made at that point. And our deposit is the plan review fee, or at least the estimated plan review fee that we would have for the project. Now, all the SDCs, permit fee and the balance of, of the permit are due upon issuance.
So it would be approved by, then you need to pay the money.
That's correct.
Okay. Just, just one of the questions I didn't know and, uh, we'll have to find out. And, uh, that's, that's it. Oh, one other question. What about, uh, um, uh, uh, mediating that process? Would you guys propose a fee in the future for faster inspections?
Faster inspections?
Yes, faster approval process of like, maybe that pays for a full-time guy. John, maybe that's the, maybe that's the makeup or part of the makeup for a full-time guy. Is, well, we got, you could pay, I don't know, a thousand bucks more. And we're gonna have it back to you, this review back to you in a, a certain amount of time. If you can continue to provide all the legitimate stuff in a timely fashion that we need. That'd be something would have to be worded.
Mayor, you mean, you, if, to specify, you mean that, yeah, to expediate and, uh, shoot, shoot this through, it would cost a person more who, or the applicant more to go through an expediating fee. Uh, much like the, much like our mail system does with Express Mail or regular mail or whatever. Is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I think the concept being that we would create an outsourcing relationship to kind of turn comments around quickly.
Yep.
Yeah. That sounds like a great idea. It sounds like, uh, it sounds like, uh, um, and the, I don't know, I just think it sounds like a great idea, as long as it's internal, where we got, where we got messed up years ago. Uh, we asked the same questions to if we could, uh, you know, keep the SDCs. Uh, when the, when the house is totally finished and things instead of being upfront. And that, we got, uh, we got, uh, feedback from one, the title company and then the, uh, uh, then the county, especially the county. It created a nightmare for the county clerks to do something like that. I, I really don't see why, but it was, uh, it was something that we couldn't follow through on. And we, we kicked that around a lot because we wanted to make certain that the developers didn't have to put the entire amount of SDCs up in their permits to go forward. And we tried and tried, uh, for many years and it's, it's gone nowhere. Uh, interesting you bring it up now that, uh, possibly to expediate, uh, these issues and, and, uh, open up talks to the, uh, title company and they, uh, and they, uh, county. Uh, it's kind of a three-legged kind of thing with the city, the county and the title people. It's, it's, it all needs to be done, uh, kind of a once according to them. For the city, it, it, it isn't that big a deal for us to, to, uh, initiate a, a, uh, uh, a, a partial fee upfront and a finished fee when it's finished. But for the other two, uh, uh, legs on the stool, it's, it's, it, it isn't working. I just thought I, I, we've been down that road, but, uh, it's always interesting to keep trying.
Yeah. So I wasn't talking about the SDC so much. I was just talking about timeline. So a builder could say, okay, uh, John, you want me to build you a house? Okay, I'm gonna build you a house. Uh, you wanna pay the thousand bucks extra so we can get it? We can have this timeline of when I'm gonna move you in for sure, because I'm gonna get the approval of the plans in this date. And this is how I work and, and these are the timeline and we're gonna have you in by crisp. I wasn't really talking about the.
I thought you alluded to the SDCs earlier.
I asked about the, does it have to be upfront, um, in order?
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Sorry, Michael.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Um, I, I do know that just, I guess to speak a little bit about timelines. There is not necessarily within the building, uh, department goals, um, but more of the community development goals. Um, there's, uh, we have talked about how to improve our system and that is an ongoing uh, conversation that's been going on. And, and my, my opinion on it is, is that it's going to be something that comes by, uh, many, many steps. Um, a- and I would point to the e-permitting as being one of those steps. Um, I would point to some of the electronic stuff that we're talking about as some of those steps. Um, I would also point to, um, you know, the, sorry. I would also just point to the fact that we, uh, um, can look at how we prioritize our work and how we prioritize the different permits that come through. I mean, there's just, there's a big conversation to be had about timelines for sure.
Good to know.
Um, I guess moving forward, uh, this is the department report, uh, building department report. We kind of already covered over the department goals and projects and moving down to permits. Um, this is just some statistical info for you guys. Uh, we issued six hundred and forty or six hundred and fourteen permits, uh, last fiscal year. Um, and there's that total that you saw also in Matt's report, uh, with the single-family dwellings of, at forty-seven this last year. And, uh, of those, uh, permits, we had two hundred and seventeen plan reviews.
How many?
And, sorry, go ahead.
How many did you say?
Two hundred and seventeen plan reviews.
Okay.
And then, uh, moving on to inspections, um, uh, just have the final quarter information on this one. Um, but, uh, but we are averaging on a, a weekly basis of sixty-six inspections. Uh, per week. So, like you, uh, like, I, I, I hope that shows that, yes, we are very busy here in the building department. Um, I do wanna say thanks to, um, Heidi and Christina though, because they keep me s- on a straight path of getting all this work done. Um, so I wanna make sure that, uh, their hard work doesn't go unnoted.
All right, Michael. Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're gonna go on to the city administrator report. John Wolf.
All right, this is a, and a new and different format with this, this meeting here in the workshop and we're, uh, looking at workshops to be, you know, information gathering sessions for council meetings. And, you know, that's the opportunity to, you know, see the information, you can read the information that's provided to you in your report to introduce new, new issues to talk about in future meetings. And, uh, the beginning of this meeting, I talked about the attempt to be, to create a better system and it's very goal-based, it's, uh, very performance-based. And it's just, there's an attempt to assign accountability and performance management. And, you know, a little exercise going through these action sheets is might have been a little bit exhausting. We'll have to find the right tempo with that. It's, you can see, and I have three more that are, I'm not sure that the level of depth I wanna go into on them, but they're uh, essentially, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to them by title cuz there's not really the level of their ongoing things about, um, you know, Matt talked about the onboarding and offboarding process, that, that's also on this list. And, uh, review, you know, the rules, rules for the city commissions and boards and also for the council, council goals and, and, uh, council rules. So I'm, I'm just gonna give it that much attention cuz I think, you know, it's already in your packet and we were pretty, pretty aware of it and been talking about it. Uh, I wanted to share that earlier this week, we learned that the public housing project up at Gable Road there on Highway thirty was recommended for funding. So they, some federal fundings, they were, it's, you know, appears to be moving forward. This will be seventy million dollars in public investment, our community for this mix of, you know, one, two and three-bedroom. Rental units and a, and a small community center. So there's a two hundred and thirty-eight units. So when you divide that into seventy, seventy million, that comes out to just under three hundred thousand dollars per unit. So, you know, affordable housing is, you know, critical need across the state, certainly in our community here. But, you know, almost three hundred thousand dollars a unit seems a long way from affordable, at least to me, but, uh, but the project will bring some revenue to the city in form of building permits, fees and system development charges and the like. And, but it was, it's going to be held in a nonprofit, so it's gonna be exempt from property taxes, which is highly unfortunate because in our rural district boundary and for that, those projects, the value of that property won't come onto the tax rolls. Which brings me to, this isn't really an urban real agency update, but I wanted to update the council on the, the status of our funding plan that we've engaged consultant, they, they're wrapping their work up by the end of this week. And you know, if you recall, the urban real agency got off to a rough start. It's really limited our ability to move forward on funding a lot of projects due to, largely due to Armstrong. Not making their investment and, uh, and eventually closing, which even was made it worse. But, uh, things have recovered. There's, uh, you know, there, you know, the good, the good news is that there's been, you know, a lot of the development in, in, in the agency and the boundary in the city generally. Uh, there's also a twenty-five million dollar investment that Cascades made several years ago that's coming onto the tax rolls this year. So that'll help out to get our, um, agency in a place where it can start to fund the projects we've been planning. That's the same time we're looking at updating, we're also considering, particularly given that we're taking some pretty valuable land out of the agencies to add some into the agency and amend the boundary. So there's, there's a boundary amendment process we wanna talk about that would take in some additional lands to bring more value to the agency sooner to get these projects going. So, and we've been working really hard lately getting prepared for development. I know we've, right now, we're preparing to request for proposals, upcoming for the council. for the design and engineering work of the near site. And of course, rather than having one project, we're looking at doing two, because I think it would fit the, potentially fit the, the type of work separately. The, uh, the one being the phase, design and engineering of the phase one Riverwalk, the boardwalk from the courthouse southward and then the improvements to the stage in the park. And that's at a parallel opportunity would be running a second request for the, the street design, engineering, construction documents to construct, you know, first street to Plymouth and Strand to first. With all the, the pertinences with the water main extension sewer, collect station, stormwater facility, streetscape, you have the lighting, all business that goes with it. This will, I think this will offer an opportunity to, uh, get the best person for the job right there, so. So sometime ago in this COVID business all hit, we were getting ready to go out for a, a bid for timber. And I heard last week, we, yes, maybe it's two, two weeks now, break between the meetings here, the timber prices are, are shot up to the pre-COVID levels. And there are forestry is recommending we move forward with the sale. And I think that's a fantastic idea, because our, our ability to move forward on project right now is pretty constrained by, by the finances to do it. And, uh, so we've, those bid documents we've, we've issued, they're, they're advertised, it's on our website. And we're looking to open the bids on August twelfth. In, you know, in advance of the council meeting, because whether or not the council wants to accept those bids. We built into some safeguards because of the volatility of the market and put in minimum fixed pricing. And, uh, and here we, we just hope for a good bid. So with regards to the, the build grant, you know, we've, we've talked about the, you know, our federal build grant has been something we've kind of relied on as, we've kind of stuck, we've been stuck without, without the funds to move forward on design, relied on the build grant. But we're, we're coming up with a, you know, an alternative plan to develop the revenue to move forward, at least the diet, design and engineering and have it more project ready. So those, those elements as far as utilities. The roadway alignment, the Riverwalk design, we're gonna bring those, advance those projects. Even with state money, if this doesn't come through, so we're advocating for that. We've been working with the state to secure funding. It looks like there's funding available and it's, you know, some of it's grants, some of it's low-interest loans. And there's delays in the, the timing of them for several years until the project's completed, maybe a really good opportunity. The coronavirus relief funding, we talked about earlier, the, uh, state was awarded like one point eight billion, the county, I think, a million eight to, uh, and city, city was just under four hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And, and I talked about the League of Organ Cities advocating for the formula and they did a lot of good work and probably got more than we would have without their assistance. But the, the funds are limited, they're, they're limited to unbudgeted expenses to, and they have need to be COVID-related. They need to serve a community need, so, and the caveat is that those bodies need to be spent programmed or, or returned by the end of December of this year. So we will be working on a, uh, Matt talked about the, the, you know, the broadband being one piece of that, some of the other internet needs around the city here to, uh, to be more, you know, work at home kind of thing. And, and another community sport, we'll be talking about that over the next several months here. So I wanted to touch base on, I got some input from two counselors on the, the public works director hiring process. You know, the process that we're doing from a department heading higher is, is different than we've typically done in the past. We've done a process where it involves, uh, you know, several panels, there's a staff panel, a community, community panel, and then the council's certainly part of that, you know, the ultimate decision-making process. I've, I've heard that there's a request to have individual time with each of these people. Wanted to open that up to, to your, to talk about there. Let's see, so make sure we get this right, so.
But I'm, I'm just curious of why somebody would want individual time. What, what's the, what, why would you not feel comfortable in talking about something, whatever, in front of elected official, right? I don't get that.
I'm carrying the torch here.
I, I legal ramifications from individual meetings. And I just, I think that, that process needs to be public and the process needs to be strictly guarded and it's just like you have to ask the same questions of every single candidate. You have to treat every candidate exactly the same. You can't be prejudiced. And if you start going individual meetings with individual counselors, there's just too many opportunities for somebody to, and not for somebody to do bad things, but somebody to accuse of bad things of happening. You know, if we're all there and it's all witnessed, then it's like, it's, it's safe, I think, from a, from a liability standpoint for the city.
It's also unprofessional. It's absolutely unprofessional. Uh, what kind of hire a profession? That, that's the bottom line. If you're gonna gang hire, go for it, but you're gonna lose your professionals.
So what's unprofessional, Steve?
Well, when you talk to a professional, it's one-on-one. Now, as Jenny says, you're asked the same questions, or you're asked the same questions in different ways depending on the personality. You don't have somebody looking over your shoulder to see that you did it right. Because you're the one who's making the, uh, decision and you don't want someone second guessing you. And the, when you talk to one person in front of three or five people versus one-on-one, you get a different reaction. And you've got, you're trying to hire a professional. That's it.
I just, I would like to hear somebody for the way government hiring happens is not the way you hire somebody in the private world.
Then you get second-rate people. Thank you.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, Councilor Topaz does bring up a good point about the, you know, the way our governance model works as far as, you know, you know, we're not a city manager, form of government, we're kind of a hybrid of forms. And that typically, in a city manager, they would hire their staff that they're supervising. In this model, we're, it's kind of a joint decision between the council and the, it's actually, it's, it's the councils, but with the, with the city manager administrator. And, uh, it's, it's a different model. And it opens ourselves up to a lot of the concerns that you're talking about as far as.
Well, I get what you're saying, John, as far as you're the guy who'll be managing this person. We pick. Tim, I see you up top there. Uh, I'm just curious what your feelings were on this.
Well, on these, these hiring processes, especially this hybrid sort of situation, it, it seems to me that there is a wide latitude of choices, that the council does have, uh, a lot of discretion here on how it goes about, uh, doing the interviewing. And so I don't think there's one legal answer. I, I do recognize though, the, the salient point being made about the risks involved, when you ask different questions potentially in different settings or potential candidates. Uh, that does open the door to some, uh, to some risk. It's not there, uh, when you do, uh, interviews with, with a panel of people. Not to advocate either way, but.
Yeah, yep.
One of my problems with this particular position is there's a lot of technical information that the person should know. And if in a panel of non-technical people asking non-technical questions, you can get likes and dislikes, but it doesn't get qualifications. And that's one of the problems we have with hiring a technical professional.
Can you develop a set of questions, uh, with input from, uh, a technical person? And, uh, have that person also, uh, help in evaluating the answers? It's possible.
One of the problems is when you ask a question, how fast the response is, or, which gives you an idea of familiarity. You can get a set of technical questions. But that's, might as well send in your bingo card then. I mean, which, as again, we're trying to hire somebody that will be able to be flexible to any number of different conditions. And a fixed set of questions does not describe that situation.
I disagree. I, I feel that I am comfortable enough to answer the basic questions of the infrastructure and the public work side of things that are not rocket science. They do require some engineering, but it's not required that this person even be an engineer. And I know where you're coming from, Councilor Topaz, and I hear you. But you're saying that me as an elected official mayor, uh, is incapable of listening with the remaining four of you and Mr. Walsh to find a qualified person?
I'm saying that you're unqualified, I definitely am saying you're unqualified to judge how qualified an engineer is. I would, I back away from that.
It's not required that this person be an engineer for a public works director.
You better have a qualified engineer, because he's gonna have to, in our town, which has got a whole lot of new building coming, he's qualified to, uh,
We need to have.
Design.
We need to have a separate meeting on this with our attorney, so we can hash this out, because, um, and I'll do it publicly with you. But you're the only one, you, you're saying you're the only one with an engineering degree and that you're the only one.
Counsel, correct.
Only one suitable to make that decision. Is that, that's what you're saying.
On the technical part of the job, yes.
Where you're trying to go with this.
That's correct. I'm talking about the technical part of this position.
Councilor Topaz, I totally disagree with your judgment.
No.
Because it's not about engineering, it's about character and livability and the per, the right person for the right job that's a fit in our community beyond just the scope of one engineering qualification. That's just a very small part of the job.
You truly do not understand engineering then, Mayor. Truly don't.
I didn't say I was an engineer. I said it's a little part of the job. We can hire engineer, a public works director can hire any engineer he wants to get the job done. He's got a scope of work in front of him, which is in our master plan, which we already have set up. Councilor Topaz. What else you got to say, Steve? Anything?
I think, um,
I don't need to.
I think Doug has a comment.
Well, my comment is pretty simple. Uh, we're council, we're council people and, uh, we work as a group. And that being said, we are a team and, uh, that's it. I mean, I, I don't understand why one of us has to emerge with an expertise and say, okay, I'm running the show. I, I don't get that. So, in, in some sense of Steve, I disagree with what, with what you're saying, because we need to work as a group and as a team. And you, and we listen to you. Uh, maybe you think that we don't listen to you, but we do. So, but to give it all to you and say, hey, go with it, uh-uh.
No, interesting enough, I need to know the technical part of it. There's other parts of it that we have to find out, which is beyond me. But if we don't have somebody who's technically capable, then we have a problem. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm glad you're on the council then, Councilor Topaz, because you should be able to sniff it out then, right? So when that arises, when we're deliberating, you'll be able to bring it up, won't you?
I will.
We're covered. Our bases are covered, aren't we?
Yeah, we're here to listen to you. But we're here also to, we're here to also do our own research.
I, I just, I've just.
And maybe you feel that we, maybe you feel that we aren't qualified to do our own research. But hey, doing your own research is, you know, if you wanna do it, you can get it done. I, it doesn't matter what your qualifications are in many senses. And hey, we're a team, Steve, okay?
We're all accountable for this decision.
Me be part of it, but you're not letting me be part of it, because you've already said that my expertise is not the thing that's important.
It is important.
Wait a minute, I said it's a small part, Steve. And you've talked down to, wait, wait, I'm talking, uh, it's my turn. This is not the first time you have talked down to me and the entire council that we are a bunch of idiots. You come out of your mouth that you're the only one with an engineering background and we know nothing.
And boy, I'm tired of that.
And you said that, and, uh, entire council has heard that, is that correct?
That's correct. I don't back off on that.
I'm asking the entire council, that's right, Councilor Topaz, and you are out in the community. I, I wish you would talk to more citizens in your small little bubble to show them how smart you really are.
Yeah, I just, my, my point is, is that we're all accountable for the decisions. All five of us are equally accountable. So all five of us have to make the decision. So it's like, if I'm gonna be held accountable in the community and just in my subconscious, just ethically for this choice, I need to be a fully vetted partner in the choice.
Correct.
You know, all of us have different skills, different abilities, and we're all accountable for this decision. You know, I just, I just don't, I, I wanna have more weigh-in from the attorney before we change any type of process, because I've watched us hire, I, I know how John was hired, I know how Chief Greenly was hired, I know how Terry Moss was hired. And it's like, when you're gonna deviate from historic process, we need, that's more than just a run-of-the-mill decision.
You know, Jenny, you bring up a good point, that this has already been the process and this obviously came from Councilor Topaz. This whole wrinkle wanting to personal interview people. We already discussed this prior to. And Steve, it's not till we get further down that you wanna always start stirring up stuff. When we get closer to pulling the trigger on any big projects or anything else, you have, you have slowed this city down in more ways than one. And I feel that it, it's an injustice to our citizens, what you have done and what you are doing currently right now in the middle of this process.
Your feelings, no problem.
That was the middle of John's report.
And the follow-up, yes?
Now for the hard questions. So if there are, we're putting together a, a list of questions based on a professional, um, executive recruitment, has been based on our basis. There's not a lot of technical in it, if, if we wanna propose some technical questions, we're, we're all ears here.
Getting down, let's reveal them, let's, let's put a public hearing notice out. We'll have to reveal them, I guess, to, to make a decision that they're technical enough for the liking of Councilor Topaz. And that we, um, get an approval of the agenda that we're gonna ask for the public works director. So whatever we gotta do to public hearing that, Kathy, um, we need those questions drawn up and enough time to have a little mini-meeting prior to interviewing our candidates.
Yeah, we already have a stock question that the council's already approved before, but we're just trying to add to, bring some more depth to it, so.
Make a decision.
Do you have to have a meeting to review questions, John? I mean, when we, when we did the application, this is my question. When we screened the application, I went into Kathy's office, sat there and screened the application and made my, my notes and gave them to Kathy. Wouldn't the questions work the same way?
Good.
I mean, I just thought if people are concerned about the questions, people can individually review the question and make their recommendation, make their notes, because I may not be an engineer, but I might, other questions might, you know, come to mind for that, like, don't ask this this way, that's not important or whatever, that we'd all feel like we were part of that process.
Maybe, uh, maybe we could have, uh, a couple minutes for each counselor to ask individual questions after all the basic questions. But those individual questions would have to be asked to the entire group. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense. Uh, Jenny.
Does that make sense, Jen? Yeah, look, I, I talking to, to, uh, responding to a coun- Does that make sense, Jen? Yeah, I, I talked to, to, responding to Counselor Carlson, I was just saying that, you know, the, the format could be a little more personal that way. And we could end it, we could go through our own kind of ascertain a personality and establish kind of a, a, a three-minute or so relationship with whoever we were interviewing. Just like a one-on-one interview.
Look, no, I want to keep it totally professional. We are trying to hire a.
That is professional. That is so professional.
Well, I just, I just feel this could go very well when we can keep it rigid to a point to our questions.
Right.
You know what I mean? I, I really want to bring our, deserve the best. And I think we need to go through the process as we have vetted before and do the process because we've landed a very, some very good candidates in the past. John Walsh.
You made the comment that you and Kathy Payne discussed some parts of the questionnaire. I assume the rest of the council was asked. I was not asked to.
No, I didn't, I didn't review any questions. I did not review any questions. I looked at the application. I sat at a table in her office and looked at the applications and reviewed them. I did not ask her questions. I did not talk to her. I just looked at it in her office, separate from the questions.
Like, because I wasn't even given that privilege. That's why I asked. Thank you.
Yes, you were.
That's not true. Everyone saw those applications.
You and I were supposed to go together, Steve, and you chose to came in and you reviewed them prior to calling me. And if you really wanted to talk to me about maybe something I'm not seeing, that would have been a perfect time to talk to me, Steve. But you came in and reviewed them because I talked to Kathy and I said, hey, let's get together with Steve and review these, these, uh, resume. And you'd already done it, Steve.
I, I talked to John about them, yes.
Yeah, that's the same thing. That's what I'm talking about. John was busy.
That's, that's what I'm trying to find out.
You hear and say that I'm not trying to work with you when you just went rogue and, and reviewed them on yourself.
We all did it individually.
If I'm missing something, Steve, I, I, my phone's always on. I'm around town. I'm working. You can stop and talk to me anytime, Councilor Topaz, but you don't. That's what, that's why this is really frustrating to me, Councilor Topaz. It works both ways.
Was John gonna talk now?
Yeah, I was just gonna make, the, the application review is one thing. The questions that were asked were developed. Kathy sent out to the council and asked for, to, to comment back if you had any questions, comments. And we didn't get any before the, before the meeting. So those are the questions we ran with for the screening interview.
Right, but, but you had, you gave us screening questions and then did you give us the regular questions too? I can't remember.
The, no, those are, they've been approved a long time ago. It's just part of the administrator process and packet. But I can send them out, this new draft. I can do the same thing again, send it out. Counsel has comments. I can try to best incorporate those into a document. Have something for them.
From the process we've established. That's all.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to ask the right questions here.
The right questions, absolutely, but I'm not gonna abort a process that we've been using for years.
I, I, I just wanna say, I didn't want to get our, our feelings involved in this interview that any hard feelings between anybody should not come up because we're, we really need to be professional about this. Now, you know, I want to apologize for getting a little bit emotional, but everything I said was true. Tell me it wasn't. And it's frustrating when we're trying to move a city forward and it seems like we're working against ourselves sometimes. And it's just really tough. And so that was really truly out of frustration that that just happened right there. Maybe it was a little unprofessional, but it was the truth.
Okay, so with regard to the panel's style of interview we've done in the past, we want to switch it around so we can accommodate those?
Slightly.
Yeah, right now it's just the council and a tour. And it could be, could be the, the council tour, a, you know, a management team.
I would definitely like yourself involved. I mean, there's no doubt about that. You're gonna be the one that's overseeing this guy.
Sure.
That, I mean, it's, it really, it really, the way it was supposed to work out. You're a department head. And you're the manager. We, we gave you the authority, John. So I would definitely say that John is part of this process. We voted on that to move him more to a leadership role, manager style. Hybrid, right, counsel? All of us did. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, that, that John should be, is the one person that should be involved in this all the way through. And with the exception that we decided that, that the council and only the council would vote.
Well, I think John, I think John's ability to vote should be definitely, I, I, I would like, I mean, he's a manager. Whether, whether, not to administrator, but we, we want to try to move this into more management style position.
I mean.
But he's, but he, but Mayor, and John, don't get me wrong, but John is staff and the staff is staff. And we were elected to, in many senses, oversee the staff. Make certain that the staff is doing what they should be doing. So we're asking him to vote on someone that, that he is going to want to hire and oversee. Oh, that's fine, but I, you know, I, I, I think it should rest with the council.
Well, I just think it's like, okay, we just, let's just go ahead and hire officers and not let Chief Greenway have any input. Let's just go ahead and start hiring, uh, public.
No, this is a, no, this is a department, this is a department head we're hiring. We're not hiring a, we're not hiring someone as a crew member on public works.
And John manages department heads.
So I, and I, I don't disagree with Counselor Morton there. I think what might be a good model is to have the council run a panel and then myself be a part of the management team panel. And then, you know, the council's the ultimate authority and it is making, they always have been. The, and then just consider the management team's recommendations, what they come up, come up with. That's how we've done it in the past.
Yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. And I just, following business models of CEOs usually do not, do not have a vote, but they make recommendations. And so I agree with, I agree with what John just said.
Yep, that keeps the lines fairly clear, so.
Okay, what else you got, John?
Is that enough? Just, just a few quick things about the, you know, just projects that are ready to go. The St. Helens Industrial Business Park, you saw a draft of that. There's another revision coming. You know, the primary objective with the parcelization of the, the business park there is to define the public rights a way so that we can proceed with the design and engineering of this utilities to serve the site and move forward on that, go after funding for that, you know, those types of things. There's also the grading and drainage plan proposal is ready to execute with the contractor that we've gone out for bids on and that, that's ready to go pending the resources to get it done. And there's also the reservoir feasibility study we have also ready to queue up and ready to go. So we've got a lot of things that are just ready to go, contain, they do not have some funding. The timber harvest kind of slowed us down a little bit. And, you know, rightfully so. It took a pretty good dip there and would not want us to do it otherwise, but.
Hey, could I ask that you actually have come to into our next meeting and give us an update? I think we had a few other cuts that we opted out of that potentially could.
I can talk to them about it. I can, the, you know, the bid opening for the salmonberry is the 12th. Yeah, I can talk to them, but I'll, I'll talk to them, see if you can make it.
I think we had three cuts that we could do. Is that correct or was it more? And we chose 166 acre, right?
Yeah, this, this is the 66 acre piece.
He highlighted in red, and it's been a while, it's been so long ago, but I thought he had three different areas that were potential harvests.
Yeah, the only one we were talking about for this past year was that 66 acres. Just trying to get into that sustainability rotation.
Yeah, I get that. You need money.
We need money. Got a lot going on, so.
So ask him, I, ask him if he could give us an update.
I will do that. Well, something that didn't get included in your written packet is, and this is all still new, is we're going to more, your packet's gonna have a lot more information in it. So things like tourism reports and things are, will be in your packet. I'll make sure that that gets, gets out to you. You know, 13 Nights has been kind of holding its own as far as, you know, there's enough attendance to help pay for the events and everybody's trying to be safe and it's working. 13 Nights and then it's Spirit Halloween. E2C, the campground is doing, doing really well out there. It's been, it's nice to see that. Shuttle's really popular. And there's going to be a performance, the Strange Tones, I'm a street performance on August 1st. Here, in the plaza here. I think that's it. There's some other things going on, but you'll see the more detail in your, your report.
All right, so we're gonna be going into executive session. We're not done with this yet.
Mayor, I've got something to say before we go into executive session.
Okay.
This happens because of Resolution 1872, the fact that it was signed that I voted for it, but in fact I didn't. This is a statement that I have to read. Attention fellow council members, St. Helens citizens and members of the press and radio. First, I would like to say that I am opposed to the marijuana, including medical marijuana and the sale of St. Helens property for the use of marijuana purposes. What I am opposed to is the sale of St. Helens property by our council members, past and present, as if the property were their own property without regard for the following statutory requirements for advertising and open bidding. This brings me to the St. Helens Resolution numbers 1872 adopted December 18th, 2019 by the city, St. Helens City Council. The entire resolution should be rendered null and void. It is so difficult to follow purposely, I believe, because most of it purports, cannot be substantiated as to render it false or pre, or pure fiction.
That's a false statement, what you're saying.
Believe, it is, I believe, a wonderful example of obsecloration and of the highest order. First and foremost, it is irritating to me as a.
False statement that you are making right now. There's been too many false information in that, that do you, to even allow you to read that any further, Steve. We had the property appraised, it's in with our urban renewal, we've had lawsuits. Don't tell me that hasn't been well-vetted. You are misleading our citizens and trying to stir waves right now. Objection.
Mayor?
Objection.
Are we allowed to finish this?
You can make it, make it.
Right.
Unless it's facts, because that is not facts. It's very fiction.
Well, let me finish and see if you agree.
I don't. I just told you. I already stopped you halfway through. We're done. It's not true.
Okay, you'll be able to read this in the newspaper. It's been forwarded to the newspaper.
The mayor is in charge of running the meeting.
Okay. Forward it to the newspaper.
Councilor Topaz.
Uh, advertise this for the sale for bidding.
Councilor Topaz, you're out of order.
Your newspaper will give you the whole read of it then.
Topaz, you're out of order. Okay, so with that being said, we are adjourned. We will be going into executive session or S. 192.62 and 8. So we are adjourned.